...for Tuesday, October 13th, 2009. We are returning from closed session. At this time, we will open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation available.
Vivian Rodriguez is with us tonight.
Si, muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del color de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesite la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Thank you. And we do have headsets available for the hearing impaired. You can ask at one of the side tables over here. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
We do have two introductions tonight. The first is Britt Ortiz, Director of UCSB's Early Academic Outreach Program. Britt, I don't, there you are. Thank you. Britt, please come on up to the podium here. Britt is here to share information on the Algebra Writing Academy he helped coordinate at Galita Valley Junior High this past summer. Britt, we're glad to have you with us tonight.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for the opportunity and the honor to come before you as both a homegrown person, a local Santa Barbara who went to the public schools here in town, being a Galita Valley and a Dos Pueblos graduate. Have a little PowerPoint, I think. Okay. Okay. So, let's go through this really fast. So, we ran Academy this summer. It was a summer algebra academy. And research tells us that we have a couple challenges, and I'm sure we all know this, that students, of course, turn to their parents for advice, but one of the challenges about that is that most of our parents, or a lot of our parents, are first generation. They didn't go to college themselves, but they know that college is good and education is good, but they don't know how the system necessarily works. Another thing, many students don't do their homework. Ask any teacher and they will tell you how incredible that issue is in terms of performance, outcomes in the academic arena, as well as turning into academic failure in the ninth grade, which then, of course, manifests itself in some cases as a dropout problem in the 10th grade. But for sure, if students are achieving, they're not working to where they should be for us in terms of the school, as well as for the universities and colleges in terms of being eligible. Of course, algebra is the gatekeeper. Not only is it the gatekeeper to the university, but it's the gatekeeper in terms of academic performance in the schools, the standards. Whether we want more students to go into math and science, or what they call the STEM majors, it is one of the gatekeepers, and here are some stats around that. Also, research tells us, on the upside, that with clear career goals and aspirations, students perform better academically, as well if they've identified a college or university, they tend to outperform their peers. So, given the research, I have a model for you that I'm going to tell you about, and how we can solve for these issues and these challenges that face us, both at the university level and at the public education level. First of all, some of our partners this summer, just a few, but in particular Helen and Will Webster Foundation gave us a $20,000 grant. We are very much appreciative of that grant, as well as the work that Lori Hoyle, the campus grant writer, helped us with that, to run the academy. Given the challenges that we faced as a school district, as well as a university, we needed an outside resource to try to secure this opportunity. Again, here are some of the other pre-college programs that we worked with over this summer. What's the difference? Why is this so insignificant? Why did this academy work, or why do we believe it works? First of all, it creates a college-going culture among participants, whether it's the teachers, the students, the counselors. It focuses on this college-going culture. It's a strategic intervention. We're looking at working with students going to eighth to ninth grade, very critical transition, or from the sixth to seventh grade, another critical transition, where we know that we lose students in terms of their academic achievement, and it's research and data-driven. What are the primary goals? One in particular that we don't tell students about is a primary goal. Of course, we say, "You want to come to this academy because it's going to help you with algebra." But one that we don't tell them, but that is one of the most critical aspects of this, is introducing the whole family, not just the student, but the whole family, to a college-going culture in higher education. Oftentimes, we have our students in these programs. They learn about the A through G, they learn about financial aid, and they go home to talk to mom and dad, who haven't gone to college, and mom and dad can't talk the same language. What this does, it allows for the opportunity for both, parents and students, to learn about college. It's not regular summer school. It's mandated parental involvement during this academy. We see about 85 to 99 percent of the parents coming to parent-related activities for the academy. These are some of the other reasons it's not just regular summer school. What happens in terms of parents? These are some of the activities that parents have to participate in. In particular, the College Family Night is very critical, because this is where students share the work they've done in their college readiness seminars about creating a four-year plan and a 10-year plan. The four-year plan meaning, what am I going to do through high school? The 10-year plan, what am I going to do after college, when I'm looking for a career? At the end-of-program celebration, most summer schools don't have a graduation ceremony. The academy does, and in fact, we see 90, 95 percent, 99 percent of the parents coming. Let me just tell you what's interesting about that end-of-program celebration. Not only at our academy, the Galita Valley Junior High, did we have 14, 13-year-old boys reading poems about love, imagine that. Not only did our students tell us that they wanted to come back for more, it was only a three-week program, they wanted four or five weeks if they could get it. Not only did parents come up to us, and those who were there at the celebration say, "You know what? This has changed my child," but we got 13- and 14-year-olds to voluntarily give a standing ovation for their teachers, their counselors, and all the student assistants that helped it, the tutors that helped in the class. How many times do you see eighth, seventh, and eighth graders giving standing ovations for their educational experience? It's very research-driven. We have professional development attached to the model, as well as evaluation. In particular, this year, we use the CSU UC Math Diagnostic Testing Project to assess pre and post, and how they did in terms of math, as well as we have the South Coast Writing Project assess the writing part, because we did a creative writing model in the context of this academy. And then we use a college knowledge survey, pre and post, to see how students did in terms of their knowledge about college going into the academy versus three weeks later at the Galita Valley, or even five weeks later at another academy that you had in the last three years been hosting at the CASA, which is a very similar structure and model to the one that I'm talking to you about right now. The pre and post test show us how much college knowledge they gained after being in the academy. What's also different is that students apply. They self-select in, maybe their parents push them in, but they are willing, avid learners to come to this academy. It's not by force, and it's not mandated to them. So, the Galita Valley hybrid model. One of the unique things about this algebra academy and creative writing academy, it was the first in the state to put both creative writing and algebra together in this kind of context. And you also notice that there's 28 hours of college readiness seminars and academic tours, meaning they toured college campuses, as well as learned academic skills, as well as learned all about the four systems, financial aid, et cetera. Here's what the schedule looked like. It was very compact. It was short. It was a short day, eight to 12 approximately, and we put all that in, three weeks. This is another part of the specific workshops. The three that I want you to look at here that I think are most powerful is this idea of exploring California colleges, learning all about majors and universities, and how those two work together. Looking at California Reality Check, which is a website where they can look about lifestyle. I want a big house, I want a big car, if I rent, if I buy, what does that look like? How does insurance play into that? And then they start setting career goals and life planning. And here's the trick, we think this is the most important part. This is where students begin to internalize why, the why part, of algebra, or writing, or in general, school, because it's connected to careers and lifestyle. Once the students start doing that, they start realizing why it's so important to learn algebra, to pass algebra, to pass the A through G courses, to get ready and look at a college early on, not later on. And kind of in a de facto fun way, when the students go into this, they start talking about, "Oh, I want a big family, and I want three or four kids, or five kids." But after they do this workshop, and they create their four and 10-year plan, they realize how expensive kids are, and they start saying, "Oh, I want one or two kids now." And so, it becomes a de facto kind of birth control. But it really puts in front of them the realities of life and lifestyle, and what you want, and how you're going to get it, and how is education tied to that. Brief overview of the algebra lesson plans for the students who participated at the Galita Valley Academy. Also, the idea of the writing that we had, creative writing being an instructional process, was very interactive. Like I said, it got 13- and 14-year-old boys to write great poems about love, and then some. When we first started, the students didn't want to interact, they were kind of shy. By the second week, students were engaging each other, they wanted to talk, they were fighting for time to get in front of the other students to talk, and writing became very important to them. We worked very closely with the script out at UCSB. The teachers were from there, they had been through their seminars and what have you, and it really added to the richness of the creative writing experience. Again, here's an idea, this is all in your PowerPoint presentation, of what they did, what they read, what they wrote about. Some of the learning outcomes, I think one of the most critical parts of this are these combinations of knowledge that the students have gained. Four systems, career awareness opportunities, colleges and majors. But the bigger part is that we follow up with these students after the fact. We do talk to them during the school year, we do advise them, we do review, there are after-school programs that we plug them into, as well as pushing them forward into the high school to other pre-college programs. One of the pictures, some of the campuses we toured, some of the breakdown in terms of the students who participated at Galita Valley Junior High versus Santa Barbara Junior High, 31 and 39 students. Here are some outcomes real quickly, but please notice, this is the math, these are the outcomes in three weeks of instruction, and in particular, the students at Galita Valley saw some of the highest growth in decimals, fractions, and integers, three of the most challenging areas in algebra that trip up most students in the learning and comprehension of algebra. The MDTP also predicts future success, that if students have mastered some of these topics, then they should do well in algebra. College knowledge. Here are some of the changes that took place from, in three weeks, the students being pre-tested, what kind of A through G, what are A through G courses? 39 percent thought they were to get you into college. After three weeks, 71 percent thought that these are the classes to get you into college. So, you see some pretty interesting changes. Did it prepare you for school? 74 percent saying yes. If you didn't get the right classes, what would you do? Well, most of us would like our students to go talk to a counselor. Pre, only 24 percent would have, I mean, 55 percent would have gone to talk to a counselor. After, almost 95 percent are saying they'll go talk to a counselor if they don't have the right classes. Understanding the mechanisms that can help them get into college. The college presentations in general, most of the students, or a lot of the students thought they were very helpful. Also, how important is to finish homework? Remember, I said, research says homework is one of the challenges. Pre, 68 percent thought it was important. After, 84 percent say it's important, or even actually more than, 97 percent say it's somewhat to very important. So, we really helped the students understand the dynamics, there was a workshop about how important homework really is. Highest level of education, again, you see the students aspiring from pre to post, and having a better picture of what they want to do after high school. This is a little bit of information about the Santa Barbara Junior High Academy that's been hosted at the CASA for the last three years. They've recruited from three different schools. It's a strong emphasis on math, science, and communications, given that Mesa, the Math Engineering Science Achievement Program from UCSB, is one of the main factors in promoting this and securing this model at the CASA and running it over the last three years. Just a brief history, one of the critical points I want to show you here, this model started in 2002. We adopted it in 2005. By 2007, UCSB had the most high schools and middle schools participating in the whole state of California in these academies. So, we were running nine academies out of UCSB. You can, of course, see what happened in the last two years. The budget has struck, and it's struck very deep. Without that grant, without some of the support that we received from Galita Valley Junior High, we understand why the district could and couldn't do things this year, but it was through that collective effort of all these pre-college programs, all the individuals, Mike, Cynthia being very supportive in their efforts, Susan coming and visiting the academy and seeing what was going on with it. So, it wasn't just us, it was collective, it was collaborative, and it helped the community. So, special thanks to these folks. And I think probably one of the most important pieces here is that this summer allowed for a local boy's dream to come true, that a Galita Valley and Dos Pueblos graduate, me, got to put an academy into my old Galita Valley Junior High, where I went and talked to students about going to college, and how that's changed my life, and how writing has changed my life, and I was able to pass it on. So, thank you very much for the opportunity and the presentation chance.
All right. Thank you. Board members, I don't know if you want to make any comments, Mrs. Deacon?
Well, first of all, I had the privilege to attend the celebration with the parents, and I have to say, listening to the poetry was really a high point. But I also just want to express my appreciation to Britt and to UCSB for really working hard to make sure that this academy kept going in the face of the budget cuts, because that was very difficult. And the other thing that I'm really encouraged about, that a lot of the students that participated in the academy became a cohort that then the principal at Galita Valley tried very hard to place together in their classes, starting in the fall, so that they had this momentum going, they'd built these bonds and relationships, and I think that was really important. So, I would just like to thank you again, and the folks at UCSB for working so hard on this.
Thank you very much. And also, special thanks to, we have Rosa Martinez, who ran the academy on a day-to-day. We have Aleen Shapiro, who's from the Young Writers Camp, who helped us co-sponsor this creative writing aspect. Are there any more UCSB reps out here? A couple in the back, wave. Oh, there you go, we got our evaluator in the back, Lisa Figueroa.
One of our teachers, Ms. Deacon.
Oh, okay, even better. Oh, Lois Klein, yeah, really, a California poet. And she was teaching our students about writing, and I think this is the piece that becomes so powerful. We really wanted to help students open that door to their inside, their thoughts, their heart, and really use creative writing as a comfortable, safe means to understand what writing is all about, versus just writing straight-ahead paragraphs. And I think that made the difference in, as Young Writers Camp and Script would tell you, the students, their writing changed over the three weeks. So, that was a three-week program. If we can get it longer, we would love it. If we can continue to get more support from the community, as well as the district, as well as the school, we would love it. We understand it's a very challenging situation. We are going to go back to the Webster Foundation for another grant for this next cycle. Hopefully, we can all have summer school and continue in this effort, and thank you again for all your support and the opportunity.
Thank you. We very much appreciate it. I know you had to race through this. This is a lot of information, so thank you for giving this to us so that we can go through it at a more leisurely pace at another time and follow up with questions.
Exactly. There's a ton of stuff, but there's the evaluation information is in your packet, as well as the PowerPoint, and there's contact information, so please feel free to call us at any point if you would like to continue to explore the opportunity. We definitely will be here. Pathways is on a regular, daily basis in Galita Valley, at Dos Pueblos, at Santa Barbara, as well as the junior highs, so they are there on a daily basis and putting in the good effort for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Britt. Well, we also have an introduction tonight. I'd like to introduce our new Director of Special Education, Carrie Mills. Carrie, would you please come up to the podium here? Carrie brings extensive special education experience to the department. She will be working with our Executive Director, Tom Guajardo, and with Carol Miller, who is still with us for a number of months to come. She has served as the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education and Student Services in Mill Valley School District. Her prior work includes Director of Special Education of the Consortium of Four Schools and County Office at Calaveras County, the Coordinator of Special Education for the Moreno Valley Unified School District, Coordinator of Special Education in Orange County Department of Education, Principal for a Special Education School, excuse me, Special Education School in the East Whittier City School District, Mentor Teacher and Specialist for Autism Spectrum Disorders in Los Angeles County Office of Education, and Teacher Specialist for Autism Spectrum Disorders in the Simi Valley Unified School District. Actually, she's done more things than that, but I think that's enough to establish her credentials. Welcome to the district, Carrie.
Thank you very much. President Parker, members of the board, Dr. Sarvis, staff and guests, thank you for the opportunity to join the administrative team in the Santa Barbara school districts. I'm really excited to be here, and I look forward to taking a positive leadership role in restructuring special education. I love being part of the community and in building partnerships with both parents and educators. Again, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Dr. Mills. It's an exciting and challenging time for us in special education. We're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Okay, the superintendent's report.
Well, let me report on something. In fact, let me start with special education. We continue to update and build the special education information on our website. In fact, a staff contact and email list has been added to that section. You'll hear more about special education in our update tonight. I'm pleased to report that our Nutrition Services Department has the confidence and support of a local donor for our school nutrition program. Nutrition Services has received an approval for a grant of $20,000 in kitchen equipment from the Orfala Foundation. The grant will provide pots, pans, scales, whiteboards, industrial food processors, and other items for use in our kitchens. And I credit Nancy Weiss, our Director of Nutrition Services, for her work with Orfala and her good relations with the organization. I think she's doing an outstanding job. We continue to work closely with the Santa Barbara Public Health Department. You'll see this flyer here on the dais, and we have some over on the side table. On the H1N1 flu, and are sharing that information with staff and the school community, both on our website and through our electronic news to staff. The county just prepared this new brochure, and more than 6,000 were distributed in our schools this past week. The Board Brief, I would like to comment on some items on the Board Brief. First of all, let me say that my office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It is a collection of reports and news, and news items on school and district matters. A copy of the Board Brief is on display in the reception area or can be found in my office. October 2nd Board Brief saw a complete set of district complaint procedures. So, you know, we have a number of them, and of course, people can come and complain to the board as well. So, there is also a copy of the existing Board Bylaw on Majority Vote, which we had a question about at our last meeting, which states, quote, "The Board of Education shall act by a majority vote of all the membership constituting the Board," which means that in most decision-making, three of the board members must act affirmatively on that item for the item to have, to pass, or for action to take place. There are cases where two-thirds of, well, where additional numbers of board members are required, and those are very specific and are specified in the board policy. In addition, we included an update on district student demographics, and I will include this next week, this upcoming Friday, a list of demographics, school by school, and I think that's most important. And finally, and this pertains to most people in the audience tonight, we provide a report on an assessment of the performance of Caesar Chavez Dual Immersion Charter School relative to what the state requires for charter renewal. I met with the Caesar Chavez Board this last week on Tuesday night, and further met with the principal, the board president, and another board member just yesterday. The school has their own analysis, and I have promised to look more in-depth at their performance relative specifically to other schools. As you can imagine, there is a good deal of concern about the future of the school, and I bet that's why here people are here tonight. What we will do, board, I will provide, in this next Board Brief, I will provide the backup materials, I'll provide that report, I will provide the materials that were provided for me, to me, by Caesar Chavez, and just give you an update on where we are in that process. And, well, this is a report on what we've been doing. I will give you some indication as to when we think we can take that discussion up. My guess is that it won't be until our November 10 meeting, but we'll be able to talk about meeting dates and other issues like that tonight. At 10:30 a.m., Thursday, this Thursday, October 15, Monroe Elementary School's PTA will accept a $10,000 check from the Governor's Council on Physical Fitness. Board members, if you would like to be at Monroe School on Thursday at 10:30. Six years ago, only 6.6 percent of the fifth-grade students at Monroe could pass the state physical fitness exam, due in large part to the PTA's support of physical activity and physical education over the past five years. Now, 46.3 percent, from 6.6 percent to over 43, or 46 percent, of Monroe's fifth-grade students passed the same test this last year. That's an impressive number. Friday, October 16, is a Career and Community Service Day at La Cuesta High School. I will be there, and I know a number of board members will be there as well. And I'd like to call your attention to the artwork that we have here. Robin, would you please hold that up? And that we have over on the sidewall. This is on behalf of the McKinley Students in Grade Six, who created their own print designs based on the Ghanian Akindra cloth symbols. Akindra cloth is a hand-printed fabric developed by the Ashanti people, and was traditionally made for royalty to wear at religious ceremonies. Though the years people have also, through the years, people have also decorated the cloths to tell a story and to express their thoughts or feelings. Each piece of artwork contains one design printed 16 times. Did we get it right? I'm sure we did. Students choose two colors of ink to use in their work, and I'd like to thank the school's art program staff, Angela Lang and Sophie Cohen, for their fine work with students and for coming in today to set up this display for the board. Upcoming events, you have a list of upcoming events on the dais. Dos Pueblos High School's DP Rocks Concert and Art Festival takes place this Friday. Santa Barbara Junior High School's Family Ultimate Science Exploration, called Fuse, Family Ultimate Science Exploration, Science Night, happens on October 28. Galita Valley Junior High presents Boo, a series of three spooky plays on October 30. Good timing. San Marcos High School's Fall Play, Dracula, begins November 13. Santa Barbara High School's production of Pinocchio begins November 13 as well. You'll have to pick and choose between these as we get into the season. Dos Pueblos High School presents Kaufman and Hart's Classic Comedy, You Can't Take It With You, beginning November 14, and Santa Barbara Junior High School's Fall Play, Stephanie Hero, begins November 19. You can check our website for the details or for a repeat of this information. And finally, as part of tonight's report, I've invited Ellie Iverson. Ellie, are you here? I didn't see you earlier. Students from Santa Barbara High School to give us a student report. And are you Ellie?
No, but I'm going to give a student report.
Are you a roomie?
No.
Come up and introduce yourself.
Well, please come forward and tell us who you are. Here, come on up to the podium.
Evette Gill.
Oh, good. These are students from Santa Barbara High School to give us an update.
Hi, everybody. I'm Emily.
And I'm Evette Gill. So, I guess we'll just give you guys kind of an idea of what we've been doing in ASB at Santa Barbara High for the past couple weeks. Just this past weekend, we had Homecoming, which was a really successful event for us. We were able to sell over 1,200 tickets, which is about half of our student body population, which is pretty impressive. Last year, we only sold 900, so that's a pretty big increase. We had really good attendance at the dance, and prior to the dance, we were able to put on an event, which we called an aerosol art event, which allowed students who would not normally be involved with Homecoming and games, activities like the football game and Homecoming Court and all that, it gave them an opportunity to get involved in the school and create a piece of artwork that was then displayed at the Homecoming Dance. a piece of artwork that was then displayed at the Homecoming Dance, which gave them the opportunity to go to the Homecoming Dance and say, "Look, there's my art. It's on the wall at the dance," which was pretty exciting. We had a really good turnout for that.
And also, we had our first-ever carnival and the carnival was to replace the Homecoming Parade due to the budgets. We couldn't do that. And the Homecoming Carnival turned out really well. We actually sold out for food, which was a major success. And also, the artwork for the aerosol art competition was displayed there and as well as the Homecoming princesses were there and all the sports teams and bands.
Yeah, so that's pretty much what we're dealing with right now in ASB. And one of the issues that was involved with our Homecoming Parade that a lot of you might know about, we have done it every year for the past, for a really long time. Sorry, I don't know exactly how long.
Forever, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, as long as anyone can remember. We had an issue with, usually the time is donated by the police force to blockade our parade, so we're able to get the trolleys and the landshark and such to conduct the parade. But this year, the police wanted to charge us $4,000 for their services, where in the past, we've paid, the services have either been provided or we've paid somewhere around $1,000, which is why we weren't able to put on the parade and ended up with the carnival instead, which was a pretty big success considering we were able to sell the food from the high school to create revenue for both the school and ASB. That's pretty much what we're doing right now.
Thank you. Ladies, your names again, please.
I'm Emily Dahl.
Emily.
Emily Dahl.
Thank you.
And I'm Evette Gill.
Thank you. And I'm glad to hear that you sort of made lemonade out of lemons, but I know it's really disappointing to have a tradition sort of pass away because of budget cuts in the city, essentially. That's sad to hear. But thank you. I'm glad it was successful and I hope you took photos of the aerosol artwork and put it up on the website. I'd love to see that.
Yeah, I think we have, yeah, we're working on our website right now.
All right, thank you.
It's in progress. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And I wanted to, and I wanted to share just one last piece of information, message we just received from former Mayor Harriet Miller. She called us to let us know that she was invited to a ballet at the Granada Theater, which was attended by our elementary school students. Former Mayor Miller says that the children were very well behaved, quiet, and better behaved than the adults. She was very proud. This is the end of the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Well, move on to Item C2, Announcement of Closed Session Action. We do have one item to report out on Item B2, which was Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation. In Student Case Number 2036450665, it was moved by Deacon and seconded by Herron to approve the October 5, 2009 Revised Settlement Agreement and Release involving payment and reimbursement of services in the amount of $4,320. That passed 4-0 with Cordero absent. Moving on to C3, Public Comments. Do we have any public comments?
We have one, and there's a lot of people out there. If you do not turn in a slip and you want to talk, there are slips on the back table. But Lee Fleming and Steve Chablis.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and close to public comment at this point. And you will have three minutes.
Right. Good evening. My name is Lee Fleming. I'm the President of the Governance Council at Caesar Chavez. And you're right, that's why we're here. We're concerned and wanted to show our support. And also, I'm here tonight to show you that we really are more than qualified to renew our charter at this time. So, I just wanted to highlight one of those reasons why, and that's our 6th grade scores. Our 6th grade scores are equal to or better than similar schools and therefore, we have fulfilled the ed code requirements to renew our charter. I think sometimes we focus on those overall average test scores, but as research demonstrates the outcome of our bilingual approach, those 6th grade scores is a more accurate indicator of our success. The reason why the 6th grade scores are a better indicator is, one, the dual immersion literacy model emphasizes reading in students' native language first and then builds on that foundation. Two, it takes students in bilingual programs, five to seven years really, to see those test score increases due to normal development of full bilingualism. So therefore, grades 2 and 3 in schools that are English-only would have higher test scores than the English learners at our school. Given this knowledge, 6th grade and beyond are better measures of our bilingual student skills. Last year was our first valid sample size of 6th grade scores and indeed, they did score favorably when compared to schools with similar demographics. So, given these facts, we qualify for charter renewal according to the criteria spelled out in the MOU outlining the ed code, indicating that the Board may choose to renew our charter based on evidence that, I'm going to quote here, "That the academic performance of our charter school is at least equal to the performance of the district public schools using achievement data from assessments, including but not limited to the standardized testing and reporting program." Our parents are made aware of these same points about the sort of dip and then rise as they come into our school and our enrollment increases year after year and we have a lengthy waiting list of parents who are willing to invest in that long-term academic success. When our family came to Santa Barbara four years ago, we were looking for a school for our children that would prepare them not just for the end of the year, but prepare them for the world in a meaningful way and a more long-term investment. I'm a professional educator and nationally-recognized secondary reform work and I intentionally picked Caesar Chavez for my own children because it deals in futures. I was not looking for a short-term investment and I feel like that 6th grade data and alumni studies beyond really suggest that our families made a wise investment. So, I have for you the Programmatic Audit that I think you're going to receive, but we have it here for you, including an executive summary on the first page. So, we really look forward to meeting with you individually to answer any questions you might have and of course, we invite you to come to our school to see what we're really about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Move to approve with appreciation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Noel?
Aye.
That carries 4-0. Mrs. Cordero is absent this evening due to illness and so, all of our votes will reflect her absence. Moving on to D, any items to pull from the consent agenda? Mrs. Deacon?
D12, please.
Dr. Noel? Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries 4-0 to approve the remainder of the consent agenda items and we will return to the items that were pulled at the end of the meeting. Item E1, the second reading and approval of Santa Barbara School District's Initial Sunshine Proposal to Negotiate with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. And to our public that are here, if you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's wonderful. If you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, please feel free to leave at this time. We'll give a little pause for kids in particular that want to go ahead and escape.
I like that.
She wants to stay. He wants to stay.
I don't want to leave. I like this. I really.
I've already done it. Been a long time.
I'm going to ask Elaine Elverado to come up to the podium if she can. This is the proposal that you saw on discussion at our last meeting and we're asking for your action on it so that we can begin negotiations.
All right, we'll give her a moment to come up. My notebook. I'm so sorry about that. That's quite all right. Okay.
I'm just here to bring back the recommendation on the proposal for the action item now for child development and the reductions. And, so, I'm not sure if you had any questions or if there is anything we want to, you can address to me at this time.
Any further questions on this item? We have seen it before. Dr. Noel?
I just want to, I want to make the motion to adopt it, okay? And I want to acknowledge the improvements since the last time around, the greater clarity, and the procedure of allowing the week in between. It fits my understanding of the way we're supposed to do it and I think it's good. I move to adopt it.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries 4-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are on to Item E2, Agreement to Reschedule the Organizational Board Meeting, Currently Scheduled for December 8, 2009 to December 15, 2009.
And we've talked about this before and the reasons for this. In fact, we'll get a report from the Foundation a little bit later about their December 8 concert. And I've checked legal procedure. For us to do this, we need to take formal action on it.
I move to make the change.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 4-0. Onto Item E3, Approval of Classified Child Development Positions, Reductions and Layoffs Due to Lack of Funds or Lack of Work.
Again, I'll ask Elaine Elverado, our Coordinator for Classified Personnel, to come forward to speak to this item.
Bringing forth this item to the Board in more or less a reorganization and a reintroduction. We had proposed layoffs and reductions last spring and due to proper notifications and also due to change in the budget for this year for child development, we agreed and renegotiated with CSEA to bring back a full component of the child development layoffs. So, many of these that you have seen before, the reductions, are new to this proposal. These have all been met and we met with, negotiated with CSEA and which have all agreed and to the proposals and to the recommendations that have you see before you. And with the recommendations, we'll be able to provide the notices for the reduction of hours. The advantages in some of these positions that are being eliminated, that they are vacant, so there's little impact, no impact to staff. And after this meeting, if approved, we will move forth on 45-day notices for the reduction of hours. Again, that we've met in, with CSEA, Eric Smith and I have met with them and reviewed the changes that we're proposing and have been agreed upon. And at this point, we just want to move forward with the recommendations.
Board Members? Mrs. Deacon?
I just have a quick question. Could you give us a bit of an idea of what the housekeeping function is? The housekeeping positions are part of the Children's Centers Program. So, we're talking Franklin Children's Centers, Parma Early Years. These housekeeper positions are, they help serve food, they help just clean and maintenance, cleaning, I should say, after lunches. They help prepare maybe baby bottles or food, things like that. A lot of these duties can be incorporated and are part of the Instructional Assistant Position job descriptions. They assist in lunch and childcare, including diapering and other toileting, but those are all duties that can be incorporated by the Instructional Assistance as well.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
One question.
Mr. Herron?
Does this reduce the CalSave program even more than what we had a public meeting on and voted on?
Right. The Cal, this impact is only to the Instructional Assistance Program, to staffing there. This does not impact the program itself. They will remain intact with certificated staff.
Board Members?
Well, as much as we don't like to reduce anything, I will go ahead and move that we approve these reductions and layoffs.
Is there a second?
I'll make the second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Item E4 is time certain for 8 o'clock, so at this time, we're going to do a little jumping around. The first thing we're going to do is jump to E5, which is Board Action on Student Expulsion Case Numbers 09/10, 03, and 08, 09-59.
On case number... I want to see the case number on this. Oh, on case number 0910-03, I'll move for the stipulated one calendar year expulsion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 4-0. And in case 0809-59?
I'll move to lift the suspended expulsion and implement the expulsion recommendation of the Administrative Hearing Panel in case 0809-59.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes 4-0 as well. At this time, if Board Members do not object, I would like to jump to Item G on the agenda. Everything else that's on here are things that either we need presenters to come in on, that we may have public speakers on, and E4 is time certain for 8 o'clock. So, if we could see if we can take care of items from the consent agenda at this point, that would be great. So, Item G is Return to Consent Items Designated for Discussion. So, let's go ahead and do that. And the first one on the list was D3, Approval of Staff Travel, Out-of-State Travel Under Expenses in Excess of $500, dated October 6, 2009. And Dr. Noel, you pulled that?
Yes, I pulled that. I wanted to understand better this expenditure at Harding Elementary School, $13,632, being charged against Title I Professional Development. And part of that's maybe just that I, my association of Title II with professional development rather than so much with Title I.
I can explain that. Number one, we found out today, because Mr. Herron also asked about this item, that $13,000 off the bat is kind of a, in large cost because it's a little bit padded in case. So, for approval, you know, we do that kind of thing so we make sure we cover it. It actually will be a lot less. But you're asking about Title I being used for that and you can use Title I Professional Development there. At a program improvement school, you have to have 10% of your Title I go directly to professional development.
No, I forgot, I didn't make the connection that they are a PI school. And this is, all right, that ends, that's, thank you. I move to adopt that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries 4-0. Then there was D5, Approval of Academy of Healing Arts Proposal at La Cuesta Continuation High School for the 2009-10 school year. Dr. Noel?
I have no quarrel with the substance of this, but in this case and in several others, there's something that's not entirely clear. It says fiscal impact, no fiscal impact to the district, unrestricted general fund. And then we go down to what it is. It's a pupil retention block grant, which is a Tier III flexibility item, which means that it is, for all intents and purposes, the general fund. And I think that should be clear there. This money could indeed be spent on anything from which general fund money can be spent.
That's correct. And technically, you're right. And I think in the future, when we use pupil retention block grant for La Cuesta's expenses, we should make that crystal clear because for the next three years, that will be the case. La Cuesta right now operates entirely on pupil retention block grant. That's all the money they have. It's gone from $235,000 last year to $88,000 this year for these types of operating expenses. So, it... So it is that Tier III, it could be, it is, you know, the general fund at this point. But in our, working with the school, we've carved that out substantially, and they're working within their means with that.
Any further questions?
I move to adopt it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Dr. Noel?
Aye.
That carries 4-0. Then there's D6, approval of agreement between the City of Santa Barbara, City of Galita, Santa Barbara School Districts, and Police Activities League regarding the conduct of the junior high school after-school sports program for the 2009-10 school year.
It was aye again. Question on this one, and I think Mr. Smith can clarify it. But my recollection is that we usually, when we have these contracts, have a clause in them that says that we become something like the primary beneficiary. We have to be named in the insurance when it's someone else getting the insurance. And if that understanding is correct, I don't see it in here.
Generally, we insert a clause, not only do we include an indemnification agreement, but if we're requiring them to get insurance, we'll have us listed as an additional insurory. And I'm not sure if this verbiage includes it or not, but that's pretty much been our standard policy.
I scanned it. I didn't read every word, but...
I'm not sure if it's under AI.
I didn't see it under number six, maybe...
Yeah, it's under...
And I do for completed view, if, whatever protects us most.
It's under AI, where it says, extension of coverage of the City of SB, and it says, officers, agents, and employees as additional insurance with respect to PL liability, et cetera, et cetera.
Further, on, on A4, you have...
Okay.
Indemnification and hold harmless provisions.
Page four?
Top of page three, at the very top of page three.
Oh, item four, okay.
Usually, you would see that called out explicitly, but it's embedded in there.
I missed that item at the top of the page, if I pardon.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That carries 4-0 as well. D7, which is the approval of agreement between the City of Santa Barbara Parks and Rec Department and the Santa Barbara School Districts for the 2009-10 recreation after-school program. Dr. Noel?
Is that same issue about the language of fiscal, the fiscal impact? In this case, I see I struck out, I just said it's no fiscal impact in, in general, right?
Right.
Right.
I just, I find that those impact statements could be more forthcoming, or...
Well, this...
This one actually doesn't cost us anything.
Yeah, that's right. So it's no fiscal impact, yes, in general.
Oh, in general, okay. We've been using the, you know, unrestricted general fund, and it's just kind of a clause that we put in everything. Our secretaries put that in when there's no funding, but just no cost at all.
Okay, yeah. I move to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 4-0. Next, I believe, was...
Not on.
Was it D12? Approval of special education consultant contract for Steve Menharez, and that was Mrs. Deacon.
I was hoping Mr. Wahado would be willing to come up and talk to us a little bit about the responsibilities that would fall under this contract.
I do want to note also that his, Menharez, is spelled incorrectly. It has a Z at the end.
Well, that's it then. You can't hire him.
Sorry.
Yes, as you know, I was hired in late, and Dr. Carol Miller has just started yesterday. And Dr. Carol Miller has been here as a consultant and has been putting in a yeoman's amount of work and done an exceptional job. We still have one special education director to hire. We're not going to settle for just anybody. It's a difficult time of the year right now to find somebody quality and especially able to move at this time of the year. And so we want to make sure that we have some quality people in there. And Mr. Menharez has been in special education for about 32 years, and I've participated in a couple of statewide committees with him, and he's got statewide recognition for the work he does. Dr. Miller and Mr. Menharez and I have sat down and talked about how we can divide this up, because in essence, the two of them together would equate to the third special ed director that we have not hired. And as you know, there's a lot of, quite a few settlement agreements that Dr. Miller's been working on, and really has not had the opportunity to see above the water and really take a look at how we can better use her skills. And her skills are in systems, her skills are in organization, and she and I have been discussing that. So what Mr. Menharez would bring in is some expertise, especially at the elementary level, some expertise in terms of organization. I don't know if you were aware, but we've lost our secretarial staff, pretty much, three out of the four up there. And we need to not only, we've restructured from the directors and the program specialists, and they're on board, but we really need to restructure the secretarial help. We have an autism class that was approved, and fortunately, we were able to find a quality person to hire, and now we're trying to locate a space for that. And Mr. Menharez has opened three autism classes in Galita. So he, his responsibilities would be to assist with the autism and at the elementary level. And the way we've designed, if you remember in previous conversations, we have three comprehensive high schools. So the three directors, me included, will take a high school with the junior high feeders and the elementary. And the reason why is because we want to be able to support the sites and see the full articulation, because that was one area that staff has expressed to me, and in the FICMAT report was expressed, the lack of articulation. So that I would take one strand, Dr. Mills would take another strand, and between the two of them, since they're both part-time, Dr. Miller and Mr. Menharez would take the other strand. And so that's what we're looking for this evening.
Mrs. Deacon?
I see here it's not to exceed 40,000. Do you anticipate spending that amount, or...
Right now, he's a retiree, and there are some STRS require, or stipulations on that, and I believe it's somewhere around $30,000, close to there. So I don't, do not anticipate him going over the 40,000, perhaps not even over the 30,000.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Noel?
On that note, I would, I would like to see at what rate we're paying him, 40,000 or 30,000 for how many hours of work. We have that very clear in our contract with Dr. Miller, and I think that, I think that should be public information. In general, I'm sorry to see this in the consent agenda, because we're not, somehow it's not being treated the same way we treated our last hire of a consultant in this area. I have not seen this person's resume. I have not heard a report on, on recommendations or anything, and so it's just, I, I would, I would rather have seen this as a handled the same way we handled the last two or three appointments, so we'd have a little more knowledge. Not that I question what's been said, but it's just nice to be able to go through the paper and, you know, and read the letters and see what the background is and so on. And I, so I'm very uncomfortable with this. Without, without, there's no job description, kind of speaking to Mrs. Deacon's point. So I'm not going to vote for it, but I would like to see us have this person. I believe that the argument is very plausible, that this person is, is just perfect for the, for the job, for this thing, but I just don't think, I don't think the groundwork's been laid for us to move on this tonight. I can't do it.
Mr. Herron?
I'm more concerned now than I was when I came in with your description of the organization, because the FICMAT report was really clear that you're on the top, and we have a director for elementary and a director for secondary. And now we're hiring a consultant whose specialty is elementary, and I think Dr. Mills is elementary. Where is secondary? Where, and you're talking about, you're going to have, in your position, a high school, a junior high school, and elementary under you?
Correct.
That's not FICMAT report. Have we changed the FICMAT report?
Well, keep in mind that those are recommendations from FICMAT. The other piece that I didn't mention is we have three program specialists that will be assigned to each of us, and those three all have secondary experience. So our thought was the combination of elementary, secondary experience would make a perfect match for that.
Well, you say those are recommendations.
Wait, Dr. Noel, Mr. Herron still has the floor.
Well, I'm sorry. We hired three specialists, two for secondary and one for elementary. Now you're saying the three are going to be different than what the FICMAT report says?
No, we didn't hire, we didn't hire an elementary program specialist and two secondary. We hired three best people, and they happened to be secondary.
Well, FICMAT says two for secondary and one for elementary. Have all, has this been gone through the stakeholders group? Has this been talked about, a change in structure?
Well, again, FICMAT was recommendations. My understanding and the direction that the board gave FICMAT, or the stakeholder group, was to go through, prioritize, combine any, or delete any of the duplicates in there. As far as the implementation stage, I don't think that was the direction of the board.
No, you're correct. We, but the board, the board specifically voted on a structure at a special, at a separate meeting prior to FICMAT even coming out. It was very specific structure, and your description of the structure is totally different. Now, which it may be correct, but it sure bypassed all of us.
I was not aware that that structure had been approved by the board. Obviously, that was done before I came on board.
Actually, yes, it was done, when was it, last April? Or even March, I think, because it was one of the very first things we did. And I don't think anybody from special education that is currently here would ever have known. So I, I think I personally would feel more comfortable if we maybe got a report on why it is that you are thinking of reorganizing that. And then also, that would give us the opportunity to get more information about Mr. Menharez, and maybe that could come back to the next meeting if it's not time critical.
Be glad to provide that.
May I, may I request that this not be on the consent agenda?
Oh, absolutely not, yeah. We'll get a full report on it.
And just one other comment is, I mean, I have no problem with, with Mr. Menharez, but I guess I have a problem with consultants. I mean, at some point, special ed has to bond with parents over a long period of time, and we've been through several consultants, and parents can't bond. I mean, we've got to stop using consultants and get permanent staff in here as soon as possible, and get the staff... But, but I take a little bit issue, I would hope, each of you, I hope you've read FICMAT, and I hope all of you have read FICMAT.
Absolutely.
Because it's really clear as to what the structure is, so I...
Absolutely, and we can come back and give you some more information on the consultant and as well as a, a proposal as to why we, we are thinking of changing direction on this.
All right, and Mrs. Deacon, we have a time certain item for 8 o'clock. So we are going to go ahead and leave this for now, we'll come back to it. And we still have D13 waiting for us on the consent agenda, but we, again, we will return to that at the end of the meeting. So with that, we are moving to item E4, which is the notice of public hearings and approval of resolution numbers 0910, dash, 19, and 0910, dash, 20 regarding Williams' insufficiency of instructional materials for traditional calendar schools of the Santa Barbara Elementary School District and Santa Barbara High School District.
And Michael Gonzalez, our Director of Student Services and Compliance, will present this.
Thank you. On an annual basis, we are charged by the Education Code to conduct a survey of our instructional programs to ensure that all students in the K-12 system have access to primary textbooks in the core areas defined as reading, language arts, mathematics, social studies, and science. In the junior highs, we're also required to make sure that health, that there are sufficient health instructional materials. And at the high schools, we're also required to make sure that there is sufficient laboratory science, foreign language, also including the junior highs, as well as health. We conduct, as you may recall, we conducted such a survey about a month ago for our year around schools. We're presenting to you tonight the results of the schools that are on a traditional calendar. I will share with you that on the basis of the findings, we are recommending to the board that we are forced to adopt a resolution of insufficiency both at the elementary district as well as the high school district. In the elementary district, we found that there were two schools in particular, Harding School and the Open Alternative School, that did not have sufficient materials for all their students, and that's embedded as, in the cover memo, as well as in the summaries that are provided for you, as well as part of the resolutions. We also found that at Dos Pueblos High School, there was two courses that have insufficient materials. I also want to share with you, if you'll permit me... This morning, we were notified by the Santa Barbara County Education Office who visited three of our schools as a result of the Williams settlement. You may recall that the Santa Barbara County Education Office is charged with visiting our decile 1 through 3 schools, one through three schools, which includes three schools, McKinley School, Harding School, and Franklin School. There's, their visits occurred last week. This morning, we were notified, and I summarized it on that sheet, that they also found that there was instructional materials missing at each of those schools. I've delineated on that form the grade levels involved, the materials that were involved, and the particular textbooks that are missing. The district is charged with making sure that we have a system in place to make sure that while these textbooks are being purchased or found, and I'll explain that in a bit, that students continue to have access to grade-level materials. For example, at Dos Pueblos, what they're doing is they're using one classroom set of textbooks for two sections of that Spanish for native speakers as well as IB program. That does not meet the requirements of the Williams settlement. The Williams settlement and the legislation say that students have to have not only a textbook that they can use in their classroom, but a textbook that they can use, take home to use. And so the results are that we are recommending an adoption of two insufficiency resolutions, and you have that before you. I shared with you that the legislation behind instructional materials say that we're obligated to make sure that we use any instructional material funds that are available for that. And if we have exhausted those funds, we can turn to the categorical programs, the title programs, the federal programs. So this will not impact the general fund, i.e. the funds that, that were previously mentioned, the state categoricals. It will impact the instructional materials fund if we have exhausted all those funds, and it will impact these, the federal categorical programs. Embedded in the documents that are presented to the board and made available to the public is a summary of each of the grade levels by school, and there's notes at the bottom that say specifically what was missing at each of the schools. Questions?
Well, first of all, this is a public hearing process, so I'm going to do that technical aspect right now, which is I'm going to open the public hearing on this item and see if there are any public comments on item F, sorry, E4.
No, there are not.
All right. With that, then, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and take board member comments and questions on this.
I'm going to chime in with a few then. Well, one of my questions, well, two things. One is, you've gotten this notice today from the county ed office. I know that particularly in the elementary district, it's really hard to track textbooks because there's no barcoding system, and it's sort of where, where are they buried and what abandoned classroom are they located, and what desk, desk do they get under? And I think that that has proven to be really difficult. And so I guess one of my questions is, are there any plans to try to improve that process so that we can keep better track of elementary textbooks in the future?
Let me share with you that, yes, we are in the process of developing a plan. You may recall that one time in our district, and a number of principals do support this, but there is a cost involved. At one time, instructional materials were centralized in the district offices, i.e. the district offices... the district offices counted the number of students and ordered those materials. You may know that as staff was scaled back in the district offices, many of those responsibilities were placed on the schools. The result has been exactly what you've outlined, that materials sometimes are misplaced, materials sometimes are lost, as I've indicated in the memo. And there is a group of people, the, though as your compliance officer, I am charged with doing the, the background that results in this, it's actually the curriculum folks that are going to be addressing the storage and the solution that we're taking a look at. As you know, we have three people currently involved in the Instructional Materials Curriculum Department. And I, I will share with you that many of those textbooks that were reported as missing have been recovered by doing exactly as you outlined, searching different schools' storage areas and getting those books up to OAS or getting them to Harding. However, we have not completed the entire task. By the way, I should share with you that with the county, we are obligated by the 20th of October, which is next week, to outline to them how we're going to take care of that. Their standard solution, of course, is order the materials. And we will do that if we need to do that. Hopefully, we'll find most of the materials, because there has been a decrease in enrollment. So, I, I don't think we're going to impact our funding sources that have outlined in a great, in a significant manner.
And then my other question is, with the, this new list from the county ed office, we have a written resolution here that doesn't include this information. Do we need to amend the resolution?
I, I believe that that's the appropriate, and that's why I outlined, I distributed to you, as well as copies in the back. Those should be part of the resolution. Again, the resolutions are for insufficiency, and that's the primary vehicle that we're using to notify the Santa Barbara County Education Department that indeed, we have found that there are not materials. And we will amend this document before we submit it to the county.
Mr. Herron?
I'm just curious how the county found these and we didn't know it.
We're still, I met with one principal today to exactly broach that subject. I was not able to meet with the other two principals to discover what is the reason for that. I will share with you that what the county visitors do is they actually walk into a classroom, count the number of students, and ask, let me see your textbooks. And so, it's a, it's a very classroom-by-classroom kind of search. We will provide you, of course, with an explanation and a follow-up.
Thank you. Board members, for the elementary district, it is resolution number 09-10-19 that we would need to approve with an amendment to include the information from the county education office. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the motion.
All those in favor? Aye, that carries four zero. And then, for the high school district, and here's another question for you, it's still listed as the high school district, we are now the Santa Barbara Secondary School District. When is that going to go into effect for the interactions that we have with the state?
I, I think I'll defer that to the people I report to.
You can defer it to me. We haven't received final word back from the state. We're anxious to make that change, and, and we've notified them. So, we're thinking that we should be going ahead and calling it the secondary district at this point, but it's not official at the state.
Okay. So, we need a motion to approve resolution number 09-10-20 for the Santa Barbara High School District.
I will make that motion to approve.
Moved by Deacon, sorry, moved by Herron, seconded by Deacon. All those in favor? Aye, that carries four zero as well.
May I make one additional comment? We also requested instruction materials surveys from our charter schools. We're not required to report that to the board, nor are you required to certify. When that data comes in, it will be sent to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Herron?
Yeah, when the county makes their inspection, is that a surprise?
Two of them were announced, one of them is a surprise, and that's the method they use. They always announce two prior, and one is completely unannounced.
And when they announce it, what does the principal and staff do as a result of that announcement? Do they make any checks?
They make a full, comprehensive search. I, I remind you that what a Williams check does is essentially check for three basic areas. It does a facilities check to ensure that we have clean and safe campuses. It checks instructional materials, and you saw the results. It also checks the credentials of the teachers to make sure that our students are being taught by properly credentialed teachers. This was the finding, specific in instructional materials.
Well, we've been so good in the past, we'd do once in a while not to do it right, but our overall job is tremendous.
Thank you. And thank the principals.
Thank you. With that, we're moving on to the conference agenda, item F1, discussion of lockdown of San Marcos High School and security at Santa Barbara School District's campuses.
Good. I'm going to invite Norm Clevenger to come up to the podium. This last Thursday, we had a citizen who, in driving through the shopping center across the street from San Marcos High School, saw what he thought might be a student who was threatening someone with a gun. The students moved toward the campus. He came, reported immediately that, that one of the students may have a handgun. The community resource officer was on the campus. In fact, the witness, as the witness was entering the office, ran into one of the APs. The AP contacted Officer Hudley, and the school was immediately locked down. There were a number of operations then that, that took place, that were headed by the county sheriff's office. One was an investigation, the other was a closure, and the third was really a SWAT sweep of the campus. I have Norm here to recount some of the details, but what we wanted to get to very quickly was that in the end, thanks really to our students for, for their, their great behavior in handling some very difficult situations during the extensive lockdown, because it was a long period of time when they couldn't leave the classroom, they couldn't go to the bathroom, we, we couldn't get food and water to them. And our teachers and staff at San Marcos High School, they were able to wrap up most of the details in the investigation and determined that in fact, there was no handgun on campus. In fact, it was a sport drink bottle that had a black, black cap to it, that had a black cover, and that would look from the distance as if it might be a handgun. And that was good news, but even then, we did final sweeps of the campus. When I got to the campus, I learned a couple of things, and, and the, the primary lesson that I learned was that the principal operated as the chief communications officer with everyone on the campus. So, he was on his computer, sending emails and responding to emails from all of the staff members. When the school went into lockdown, he immediately requested that staff members determine whether their students were all present and safe. They did so. Every time we got an update, then he would send that update out with the information that we were allowed to get out to our staff and let them know that this will continue. There were a lot of things we, we couldn't tell them at the time, but he got that information out to staff, and then people would respond to him. So, he'd typically send out an update by email to staff members, and then there'd be an all-call on the PA system, asking teachers and staff members to check their email messages. So, that was a critical point of, of keeping in touch with our people, because in a situation like this where everyone is locked down, including the administration being locked down in the administrative offices, it's very unusual that you can't walk out on your campus and look to see how things are going on. You know, in a fire drill, you spread out and you make sure everyone's followed their directions. In this case, they have, they have had previous drills. They're expected to respond to a certain type of an alarm by locking the doors, by closing the blinds, by turning off the lights, by being quiet to go into a lockdown. And then, not knowing how long that's going to last is, of course, a very unusual condition. The other lesson that I think we learned from our end here as the district office was the need to provide a lot more information to parents. Even though we weren't getting information very quickly, even to go out with the same information, I think would have been more comforting to parents. We used, well, the school used, and, and we used the telephone calling system to let parents know what we knew. And we really should, I think my goal in the future will be to do that every 20 minutes, to put additional telephone numbers in so that it isn't only the telephone, the home number that gets entered first. We did provide information on the website, and people who went to the website were able to get that information and the updates. We'd like to provide that in the future to parents through emails as well, so that they have all modes of communication and get this information through whatever mode they're using. You know, some parents are not at home, they're at work, some parents are using their cellphones, some don't use their cellphones at work and are on email and would be checking their email. So, it would behoove us to, to work to get all of the information we can to parents as frequently as we can. With that, let me turn this over to Norm, who I thought did an exceptional job. Norm and his staff were, well, you know, here, Norm had his campus really taken over by the sheriff's department. And, and they were in a support role in many ways, but they were still, still carry primary responsibility for the, the staff and the students at the school. Norm?
Well, it's just one of those things that, it's quite an experience, and I, I don't mind saying I would prefer not to go through it again. But I think what was most gratifying for me is that we had, and I was, happened to be on the telephone at the time, when the witness came in, talked to Jennifer Foster, one of our assistant principals. And it was hard to tell how believable this, this witness was, but obviously, they came forward to make this statement. So, the first thing she did was call for Harry Hudley, our resource officer, and thank God, he was there on campus, as he usually is. He came down, and within a minute, talking to the gentleman, said, lock it down. And we did. So, for us, that's a, a long bell that continues on, and then on the all-call, we make the announcements, this is a lockdown, this is not a drill. And within five minutes, there was not a soul on campus that you could see anywhere. So, all the kids were in classroom, all the kids were locked in, and most of the sheriff and some highway patrol and police department were either there or on their way there. Shortly thereafter, they had closed down the streets close by, SWAT was showing up. We had a number of officers coming in to, that we were dealing with at the time. At that point, you know, we had the information from the witness, police department interviewed him a couple of times. We kept him there. He was actually there for five or six hours with the rest of us, so that he could be a, a part of this. And, and I think the, the consternation that Mrs. Foster felt was because the, the gentleman was actually visibly shaken. So, it was hard to tell whether he was ill or what his condition was, but he was scared. You know, he'd seen what he thought he saw, and he was reporting that, which, you know, obviously, we always want people to do. And the information was that four students, three with backpacks, one Hispanic male, short hair, white t-shirt, and black baggy pants, which is almost, you know, half of our school on any one given day, but that was the description we had. And he had seen these kids coming to campus. So, at the lockdown, SWAT then obviously was going around on campus, first to ensure that there was no one out there that was going to be a threat to anyone. And secondly, to look every place possible, garbage cans, bushes, everything else for a possible weapon that had been stashed. They eventually went up on the roof, they went everywhere. While this was going on, obviously, we did get a description of, of the students. So, then I emailed all of the teachers and said that we're looking for four boys with this description. They would have been either entered or brought into your classroom, because one of the things that we instruct teachers to do, when there's a lockdown, they go to their door to lock it, they look outside, if there's any student anywhere around, they grab them and pull them inside. So, not all of the students were in their class necessarily. If there were kids who were just coming to school, they were all pulled into class. So, we made it, sent the description out resembling this, that would have been pulled into your classroom either just before or just after the lockdown. And we got three responses of three different rooms where students matching that description had come into the room at that time. So, then the police officers went out on the campus, into those classrooms, took those students, and brought them back down. I think we originally had seven or eight students, and eventually, through all of the interviewing, ended up with the four that had been actually seen in the beginning. But clearing the campus, making sure that there were no threats outside, there were no, you know, weapons anywhere, and then assuring that we had indeed the four suspects in the office, you know, under, you know, under the sheriff's care, took probably three and a half hours to four hours. And it was at that point, they were satisfied that there was no threat out on campus, there possibly, until we know any further, there might be a weapon somewhere in one of the classrooms. So, it's at that point, then, we emailed the staff, said that we're going to be moving you to another location, when students are going to go with you, and police office will come to your room and move you, ask them to leave all their belongings behind. So, that was the instruction the teachers gave to the kids to leave their, their bookbags. Now, kids, some of them had their cellphones in their pockets, that wasn't a big deal, but we did want them to leave bookbags and anything that could actually, you know, hold a weapon and keep it not visible. And then, the officers started moving them, you know, one classroom at a time, either up to the gymnasium or to the auditorium. And there, we were able to obviously give them bathroom facilities and water and food. And we got those to them. But that was quite a long process in the way that they were doing it. And make no mistake, sheriff's department was in charge. And so, we were working with them. I didn't, I wasn't allowed out of the building till after four hours, and that was only to go with an armed escort to make sure that all of the doors on the outside of the auditorium were locked. That's the first time I got to step outside. We did, after about 45 minutes in, send a tele-parent message home to all the parents, letting them know that yes, the school was on lockdown, and that students were safe inside the classrooms. And please don't call or come to the school, because you will not be able to get on campus, and that we would let them know as soon as it was clear for their students to leave or for them to pick up their students. So, this progressed on till about four hours in, when they started moving kids into those two other locations. Once they were all safe in there, they did, all of the four suspects were in the library. That's where they got picked up and put in. The police officers went through and checked every book back, every nook, every cranny, every possible place in the library for a weapon.
Twice.
Twice, yeah. And they did find the sports bottle. And it was actually something that the young man had just purchased at Vaughn's, had the receipt still in his pocket. It was a black sports water bottle. And that was sitting there on the counter where he'd brought it in with him. So, ultimately, at that point, it was pretty close to a little after three o'clock. They gave us clearance, and they weren't sure at that time whether they needed to do any more searching in any more of the classroom for a weapon or not, but they decided that we could let the students go, but we were not to let them back in the classroom to get their materials, so they could come back the next day. So, we then sent another tele-parent message out to all the parents. The buses will be here at such and such a time, your student's going to be excused. If you want to pick them up, they will be sent over to Vaughn's parking lot, where you can pick them up there. And then, we had students who had driven themselves, and we did it in shifts. Those that were walking or taking the bus went first, and then those that were driving themselves or had come with a student who had driven them went last. We did have the other aspect to deal with, which was students who- We did have the other aspect to deal with, which was students who had left their keys and their purses, their book bags back in the classroom. So we had seven, we had five administrators and four campus supervisors and we divided up the kids into areas. We took them down to a wing, I took the E and F wing and I took all, a group of about 15, 16 students with me, went to a classroom, I unlocked the door. They went in and they could grab their book bag or whatever and then I looked in it before they left with it. So we did that at each one of the locations and everyone was able to, you know, get their keys so that they could get home. One of the issues that we did have and, and we tried to work through with MTD was there were students who then wanted to get on the bus, but their bus pass was in the classroom. And so we did work something through with them that let the kids ride free, let them come free in the morning, if there's an issue, we'll take it up with MTD. But there's extenuating circumstances here why they don't have their bus passes. So all in all, at about, oh, I think it was five o'clock, 5:30, where we had a discussion and they, the law enforcement decided that through their investigation, they had the suspects. They had the water bottle that they believed to be the only implement that was mistaken for a weapon. They had no reason or cause that would allow them to search all the rest of the students' belongings. They said we could if we chose to, you know, 2,000 backpacks or whatever that would amount to. So at that point, Brian and I had a conversation, decided that wasn't necessary for us to do if they felt things were safe. We did then contact our teachers that evening. In most cases, the students' purses, backpacks were sitting right on their desks, so they could come in the next morning, because this was first period where this happened. That was where they were going to go next period. In some cases where they'd had some activities in the class and they moved the desks around and the book bags were kind of everywhere, we asked teachers to come in. Take all the book bags, purses and put those behind their desks, so that they could give them to the kids when they came in the next day. We didn't have any incidences of kids losing their purses or book bags and all of that, so it, it worked out quite well. In all, it was quite an interesting day.
Could I make just a couple of other comments? First of all, the resource officer is, is funded by the, by the county sheriff's department. That person's with us full-time on that campus courtesy of the county sheriff's department and we're thankful for it. Secondly, special provisions were made for our special education students, we had special day class students. Some students have a particularly difficult time adjusting to new routine. In fact, in the end, when our students were moved, our special day class population went first, they had their buses right up front, they were walked directly to the buses. But, you know, they were locked down along with everyone else. Another group of students that we have special provisions for were students who had physical needs, health needs, students who are diabetic. We identified those students, made sure that they got drinks and snacks, made sure in the end that they had their testing equipment or their pumps. There was another population on campus, the nursery school kids. And we didn't have an all-call system for those parents, we had to go to the teachers so that the teachers could contact people. We did discover two of the classrooms didn't have the, the, the speakers that were connected, we've since rectified that. I mean, you discover all these little things and in fact, you know, the staff, again, the, the staff was just stellar in all of this. The staff, I think, did a great job in debriefing and, and determining all of the areas where things could be improved in the future. And we will be using, in fact, we met with the secondary principals so that Norm could talk to them about lessons learned this morning and we will have other meetings to that effect.
We met as an administrative team the next morning, Friday morning, and then we had a chance to debrief that afternoon with the sheriff's department and talk about their part in it. And I think it was also a learning experience for them, because there's a lot of them that have not been through this particular type of training and they were, of course, involved in it. And then Thursday, we moved some staff development around so that we could have a debriefing with the whole staff last Thursday. And I think what was most gratifying, when we have our meetings, we always start out with good things to share, so we start on a positive note. And so this was no different, we wanted to share positive stories that happened in the classrooms. And it was just amazing how great our kids were, how much they supported each other, how much they were cooperative. You know, as, as trying and as difficult as that situation must have been, the kids were just superb. And I have to really pat our staff on the back because regardless of how they may have felt, whether they were nervous or scared or anything else, they certainly didn't let any students see that. And they were rocks in those classrooms for, you know, five hours, most of them. And I think that was one of the reasons that the kids were able to hold it together better and be cohesive. And it was just amazing, some great stories about kids sharing stuff and food and gum and, you know, as, as uncolorful as it may be. You know, we had some makeshift restrooms that were made up in, in the corners of some of the room with wastebaskets and sheets because of the necessity some kids needed, you know, needed to go. And, you know, the sheriff's department was not going to let a soul out of that classroom till they were certain that everyone was absolutely safe. But it was a, it was a great, great to see how well the staff, I mean, I, I understand nobody likes the drills and it's kind of an interruption to, you know, the curriculum that we're trying to provide. But they were just spot on, terrific.
Thank you. Board members. Mrs. Deacon.
Well, I, I would also like to commend the staff for their professionalism, for maintaining calm in what was really a scary time and the maturity of the students. I mean, we saw the students really rose to the occasion and together they all worked it out, which was fantastic.
Yeah, they did.
I do have a couple of thoughts about things to do differently next time and you've also, you've already mentioned Dr. Sarvis, the need to update parents more frequently and probably sooner too. I think maybe the first message in hindsight could have gone out a little bit sooner. I also think it would be nice to have some staff trained here at the district offices, so that when Barbara Kiani goes out to, to be in the field, we have people who are trained. So that when calls come in, there's always a live person answering the phone. Because we want to make sure that they get to talk to somebody if they call the district. And just finally, I, I, I'm thinking about the resource officer that you had and to me, that really underscores the fact that we need one at Santa Barbara High School. Because I think that was really instrumental in
It really was.
Immediately mobilizing the law enforcement component of this.
The second person to arrive on our campus was the resource officer from Dos Pueblos.
Yeah, see? Two, we need three. Okay, thank you.
In fact, could I comment on a couple of those? Staff training, we do have the cross-training and as a matter of fact, Barbara Kiani's phone was broken, went right to message and Norm had to make other calls. But it was, it fell then to Michael Gonzalez to, to follow up and it was Michael Gonzalez who came to alert us. The, the point of information is sometimes held up because to get real information to parents depends on what the sheriff's department wants people to know as well. And that takes a long time. I'm always amazed and I watched it during the fires and I watched it again as we were piecing together our messages. It took so long in the evening when we were finished, just as an example, that we thought it was too late to put out a call at that point in time. We should have put out a call anyway, you know, our parents told us, well, 10:30, 11 o'clock, we still would have liked to call.
Mr. Aaron.
I'd like to thank Dr. Sarvis for letting us know. The first email I got was from you and I think that helped because then we were able to know what was going on. So thank you for that very first message and then Barbara carried on after that, but the thought process of, of keeping us informed, I thought was very, very good.
Any comments, Dr. Noel?
So how will we, what would you do to prevent a future incident of this kind? If you had to choose others now, what, what kind of planning, what would you put in place?
Well, I don't know about
Minimize the chances of this happening again?
I don't know how I would minimize the chances of a false report, I don't know that I would have any control over that. The only thing that I have control over with obviously is what's done on our campus. I did have a long conversation with the four students about what sort of attention they draw to themselves when school has started and they're an hour and 20 minutes late to class. And they're in a parking lot across the street, they are obviously going to draw attention to themselves. So we did have that conversation and of course, they drew a lot of attention. One of the things that was somewhat ironic about this situation and the students in the course of this event. The witness saw them having kind of a, an exchange with a car that was moving through the parking lot. And that's when from behind, they thought the student took something out of his pocket that looked like a gun, turned out to be the water bottle. When they got to school and were locked down and they heard it was locked down because of a weapon, their first thought that the people in the white car must have had a weapon. And they became scared. And so it was a difficult time for even the sheriff's department to get, you know, their involvement out of them and to really understand that yes, they were the four boys that were seen outside. I don't, you know, to end back to answer, trying to answer your question, I, I think that there are a number of things that we can handle differently after a lockdown starts, but I don't know about doing anything to prevent that on the onset.
Well, let's take a different scenario, what if it was someone with a weapon who was intent on getting on the campus?
Like a Columbine or a mini Columbine? The events were just the same, I mean, that's normally what lockdown is, what we practice is for an intruder on campus with a weapon. That's what lockdown is for us, that's why we lock it all down, that's why we don't let anybody out of the classrooms. That's why everything that happens for the first two hours is that if there's danger, it's outside the classroom and everybody else is locked in and the police come and take care of everything after that.
So the best thing that we, that we can do is just to be able to lock down when someone shows up with a gun?
We have, I would say yes, that's the best thing that we can do. I mean, obviously, our, our first responsibility is to keep kids safe.
Do you take seriously the findings in the Healthy Kids Survey that were, the reports by a small percentage, but still an absolute number, a positive number of kids who say they have brought guns to campus?
Obviously, we are always on the lookout for that possibility, we're always trying to get information, we're always following up on any leads, rumors, suspicions that anything like that ever takes place. I don't know what we can do except react to things like that. Obviously, we try and have a rapport with our students, so they're willing to have conversations with us. That's one of the reasons it's always great to have the resource officer on campus, because he has a lot of connections with these kids that allows him to get a lot of information about things that go on in the community. And, you know, you know, what we're talking about here is not necessarily a school issue, but a community-wide issue. But it's right, it's, it's part of every campus that we have, that that may happen.
You don't, do you think restricting entry to the campus might help? Reduce risk?
You know, that, that's kind of a tough question, I, I think that, that two things happen. And, you know, 36 years now that I've spent in high schools and I've been on some campuses that you almost have to have a, a card and somebody vouch for you to walk in the front door. And there are, you know, big iron rod, iron gates around the outsides. I think that, that sort of sends a message and also sends a different tone to the kids who are on the campus. And I'm not so sure that what we have in this community warrants that, obviously, it's not my decision. But, you know, I've been doing this now for 36 years, I've been 19 years of administrator, this is the second lockdown I've been involved in. Both of them were false alarms. Now, you know, I'll knock on wood because I'm very glad that they were both false alarms. And I obviously read the papers and listen to the media and I know that that's not always the case.
So you're, I, I think, I think the public would like to know then that you're content that we're doing everything we can do?
I believe we are, I believe we, within our, our resources and what we can do and what's viable in our community with our kids, we're doing a heck of a job of keeping them safe and content on our campuses. I think we have three of the safest campuses almost anywhere in California.
I'm just going to piggyback on what Dr. Noel is talking about, because I have concerns, not just for the high schools really, but for every single one of our campuses. In our district, the schools were built very open and it's, it's almost impossible to restrict access the way I think that we would if we were rebuilding these schools now. But I do think that it's something that we need to think about in terms of just ways of limiting, maybe the next time that we, when we're planning for the next bond in terms of security for our schools. What are things that we learn from this lockdown and what are ways that we need to, to limit access to a certain amount? So there are fewer gates that you need to close and things like that if, if there's an emergency on a campus or if we're worried about an intruder. So that is something I'm thinking about too, Dr. Noel. In this particular case, first of all, I want to say to Dr. Hayden, I'm so glad that we had tele-parent, I am so glad that we had tele-parent. I mean, a year and a half ago, we would not have been able to do even what we did. And I'm just looking forward to, we've used it so many times now with the fires and now with this. It's, it's just terrific that we have this as a resource and one that we can continue to develop and improve as something that we can connect with the community, with parents with. Some of the things that you say alarm me for our other schools, we have schools that have classrooms that are not wired for email. And so when I hear that that was a critical component of how you were communicating with staff and I can completely see why, then I think about our schools where, you know, sorry, the kindergarten wing would just have been out of luck.
We, we did have some substitutes on our campus who didn't have access to email and we had to phone them.
Okay, so they were on, used phones for them?
Yes.
Then there was the issue of being several hours in the classroom, most of them with no food or drink, and then the toileting issues. I know that La Colina has essentially an emergency toilet system in place, something in each of the classrooms. And this is sort of a district question, I don't know how La Colina paid for that. I don't know if it was site funds or something their PTSA put together. But I think it might be a good idea for, for
In fact, in fact, we're planning to do that. We're planning to buy 100 kits, so that we can move them onto the campus. We know that we couldn't do that immediately, we wouldn't care about doing that immediately, I mean, student safety comes first, getting the SWAT team there, getting the campus secured there is important. But in this case, just as an example, at the point that we were going to move students to the gymnasium, we knew that the gym would be too hot if we were going to move most of the 1,800 students into the gym. So we made arrangements, special arrangements for our trucks to come in with a number of fans. And while there isn't enough security personnel to escort students from each classroom to the bathroom and back, bathroom and back, I mean, you go through hundreds and hundreds of students. There would probably be enough at some point to be able to deliver these kits to the classrooms. So we will do that and I understand that at La Colina, those kits had always seemed so funny and out of place in the corner of the classroom, seem pretty appropriate right now. We can do that for about $3,000 and we will do that, we'll locate them centrally so that we could get them to a school.
Great, Mrs. Swasey?
I just wanted to add to that today, we had our secondary principals meeting, junior high and high school principals and Norm shared, you know, what he's learned from this and all. And that particular topic came up, David Ortiz shared how they were using them and several of the schools actually are planning on purchasing their own. In addition to what we might have at the district for, you know, other instances, but just so they're there in the classroom. So they're about $30 a kit, in fact, Norm already emailed the website how to secure those, so we're moving on that right away.
Great. What I would, I'm sure that there was a lot of discussion that the other principals brought up, lots of questions that they had for you. I would love to see, I don't know if it would be in a board brief or maybe simply when the safety plans come forward to us, as sort of a summary at that time.
That was another thing that came up today and we were thinking that maybe Barbara Kiani could put together, she's been in all of, most of our meetings that we've been talking about, lessons learned, what happened, you know, that kind of thing. So we're going to try to put that together for a board brief.
That would be excellent. Dr. Noel?
Yeah, I, I didn't express my, my respect for you and all of your staff, because I sat at home and followed this the best I could and because I've sat at home and followed this the best I could and kind of had visions of what was going on. Were you out, you were trapped too, weren't you?
Yes, Dr. Sarvis was trapped.
Only an hour forty-five minutes into it, you know, I didn't get the full brunt of it. I just assumed, oh, twenty minutes, it'll be over. Oh, an hour, it'll be over. Well, it just wasn't over, it wasn't over. And at the time that I got to campus, there wasn't a soul moving on campus. There was a helicopter circling overhead. There were, there were people in, officers in flak jackets and very big guns, standing guard on campus and moving around campus. I mean, it gave it a very different feel for even, even a, an earthquake drill on a campus or something like that. So yes, I've sort of forced my way onto campus and...
And then had to force your way off.
Well, I said, you don't want to arrest me. But then I was in the same situation of being locked in with the other administrators. And that is a strange, as an administrator, that is one of the strangest things, not to be able to go out and check to see what's going on out there. Yes.
I, I wanted to just reflect a couple of things. I think, I believe we should limit access. I don't know how those kids got from Vaughn's parking lot over which entrance they took at San Marcos, whether they come up around the parking circle or came in the front way. But if, if they couldn't have gotten in without going past somebody, we probably wouldn't have had a problem. Now, I recognize that that changes, that can change the tone. The last time this was discussed, one board member and one of your colleagues at another high school said fences make schools like prisons. If that's the case, we've got some pretty high-performing prisons out there with a lot of high school kids in them. But, because an awful lot of good schools have fences. My underlying view is shaped by my own area of studies. And it's simply that you, you have the risk of something happening and you have the consequences of it happening. And somehow you combine those to come out with an, an assessment of, of expected loss or expected risk or damage. If, if the consequences are catastrophic, okay, then even a very small risk isn't worth taking, or at least you price it out. What's, how do you reduce risk in the face of catastrophic consequences? To me, that's the problem we have. To me, losing a kid is catastrophic. This, this, I, I was a nuclear strategy specialist in my work at the university. And, and this kind of line of reasoning comes from catastrophic consequences, low risk. How do you minimize the risk? What's it cost you? If it's, if it's disproportionately expensive, then you've got a different equation and you would make a different ruling. I, I think, and I think at least a, a reasoned approach to looking how one, not, not necessarily enclose them entirely, but how one can reduce the risk and what the cost would be is something that would behoove us to do because the consequences are potentially catastrophic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Glavenger, and thank you so much to your staff. That was tremendous. And I have to say that I think most of the board members had the opportunity to see what was happening in the gym by looking on YouTube. And it looked like the day ended rather pleasantly, actually. So I, I think I would have rather been in the gym than the auditorium, I have to say. But I really appreciate that you have shared your experience with us and hopefully none of the best, none of the other schools have to go through what you have. But it's going to be a tremendous resource.
Well, I can only add that our students are always upbeat and resourceful.
Thank you. Okay. And we do have one public comment on this.
Mr. Wheeler? Thank you, Lynn Wheeler, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Santa Barbara Teachers Association would like to express their thanks also to administration, to Brian and Barbara for keeping us in the communications loop. Brian and I had a conversation about making sure that we were at the very beginning of that information chain. And I did thank Brian for the call that he gave me, I think about six-thirty. He sounded like he was pretty well-spent from a, a tough day. And my advice was try to check out Harry's because I think that probably would provide some, some solace there. We would particularly like to thank the law enforcement officers that were there. They did a very professional job. I've talked to a number of teachers at San Marcos. Given the, the stress that they had to, the stress of the, the situation they had, they did a very commendable job and we are very thankful for the partnership that we have with the public law enforcement agencies in, in the Santa Barbara area. I, I, I think we heard staff being thanked several times today, but I would like to just wave, wave that red flag because we all know that the captain of the ship certainly is what's going to keep things afloat and stable. And at, the, the good job that we kept hearing about the students doing came from the responsible attitudes that those teachers took and the inventiveness that they took in dealing with situations that were well beyond the daily, the daily job description of a, of a, an educator. And we'd also like to thank the classified people who were there. I would like to have the conversation continued for what are the needs of, of the educators in this situation? If you've ever had your house burglarized or been in an accident, you know, sometimes two and three days you come back and you go, oh, that's missing or, oh, I didn't see that scratch. And, and I think people are going to, as they reflect on things, continue to, to, you know, dredge up those issues. I asked Brian if they'd have support services, mental health support services there. Completely had that there the next day, so we thank you again for that. One of the things that was really key, I think, in this whole process, and Mr. Heron's been very, I think, on the cutting edge of this, is the need for good technology in our schools. And you heard how heavily the success of this plan worked because of the technology, not only the hardware and software to make the connections, but the training that was there for those teachers to make sure they were able to get that information and respond and like. So once again, I think it just speaks for the need for that. So keeping SBTA in the, in that information link at a very early point, Ms. Kiani and I are now on our BFF friends list. And, you know, I think the, the board understands, the district understands the importance of that. And once again, to thank those teachers and certificated staff for the absolutely outstanding and excellent job. I am a parent of two kids there and they both came back singing the praises of their teacher, which a junior and senior in high school don't do often. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, board members, at this time, we're going to go ahead and take our break. We're running a little late, so we'll make it a ten-minute break instead of fifteen. Moving to item F2, the update on status of special education.
I'm Tom Gohardo, our Executive Director for Special Education, will lead this report.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Sarvis, Social Superintendent Swaski and Deputy Superintendent Smith. Last couple of weeks have been, have been quite, quite busy. We've got a lot of professional development next week. We have Nick Martin coming in and Nick was here last April. And I went through and talked to some of the staff that attended and saw some of the feedback. They said phenomenal. So Monday and Friday of next week, we're doing facilitating IEPs. And we've opened that up. We want the, we have administrative designees at each of the school sites that are in charge of special education there as, as far as the administrators go. So that'll be the prime target there. And then Tuesday and Thursday afternoon of next week is part two of what happened back in April. And so we have quite a few people signed up for that as well. Wednesday, the Alpha Resource Center is working with Nick on advocacy. And Tuesday and Thursday morning, we are, we put together a customer service presentation. And that's one of our big pushes as a district this year and certainly in special education to work with, with, with parents, to work with students and, and staff. And so that will be offered for the clerical staff, the special ed department staff will go through there. We've also opened up the district office and any of the sites on a first-come basis. So all of next week will be in professional development. And the second big item is the, this year we're up for a special education self-review. And we put together a team, cross-section of administrators, speech, nurses, psychologists and so forth. And we had our training last week. And we'll be meeting with parents to get input on that as well. And so it'll be a real busy year for special education and the special ed self-review will take quite a bit of time. Any questions, comments, board members?
Dr. Noel?
I think that the rest of the board and the public would be, would be helpful for them to have a short report on the process that's been going on.
Dr. Miller will follow up with, with that on the FICMAT stakeholder. Are you kidding? You don't want to see me the whole time? Come on. No, Dr. Miller will follow up on the FICMAT stakeholder group and she's got a couple of other activities to report.
Hey, another thing I, I think would be very, another thing I, that I personally would find very helpful and I think the public would also, since we have basically new people, yourself and now Dr. Mills. And I, at some point, I think it'd be very nice to have you folks talk to us about the FICMAT report and give us your reading of the FICMAT report, the insights that you draw from it and, and an evaluation of it, if you think it's, it omit's or misses some points. I, I would like to hear that and maybe you're not the person to ask it, ask Dr. Sarvis, but I think that would be very, very useful.
I think we can debrief tomorrow morning and perhaps come up with a plan of action. Superintendent Sarvis?
Mr. Heron?
Where do we stand on the parent resource position?
The last, if you remember, we, we added more salary to it and we adjusted the job description because we wanted a little higher level. So that, the job description, I'd have to ask personnel and see what we are with that. And I can certainly follow up and let you know on that.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I would just publicly like to thank Mr. Gohardo for joining me and Mrs. Cordero at a meeting with Pueblo a week or so ago, Just Communities. Also had a representative, Padres Unidos did. There was a special ed parent there and her daughter. And really the genesis for the idea of holding one of these community meetings in Spanish came out of that meeting, although probably good minds would have gotten to that point anyway. But still, I, it was, it was a good meeting and I appreciate Mr. Gohardo getting out and meeting members of the community with us. I wanted to allude a little bit to Mr. Heron's concern earlier about a different approach to perhaps the structural organization of special ed. And I personally am also not averse to looking at it at a different way. I think maybe I was surprised, as was I think he, to learn that, that the structure was different than we had anticipated and originally based on, on approving the FICMAT report. So Dr. Noel's request to, you know, to hear more from you about your responses to that and how you are then generating your ideas about way to structure the department would be useful to us.
Absolutely. We can come back with a proposal and share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Carol Miller?
Good evening. This last two weeks has been very busy. We held a joint resolution session with a parent, advocate and school administrator and have resolved a state complaint cooperatively. I facilitated two IEP meetings and those were resolved and we resolved some outstanding issues, answered many phone calls and emails and went to some very productive meetings. Yesterday, we had our second stakeholders work group. And at the first meeting on nine-twenty-eight, we broke into five ad hoc subgroups to study the hundred and fifty-three FICMAT recommendations by category areas. And then the subgroups came back to the full work group and we presented our priorities and mostly they were A. That means that we need to implement them immediately, as well as there were lots of duplicates and consolidations. But we just ran out of time and we didn't have any time for discussion. And so yesterday, the work group got together again and we validated the subgroup's work. We made corrections as needed, talked about some suggested language and addressed some other areas. And then what we did was the work group members were asked to prioritize different categories using yellow dots, placing the yellow dots on their most important item. And you could place all five of your dots on one item if you wanted. We had several top priorities. The first was training and that received fifty-seven dots. Organizational supervision got twenty-three. And we had a tie for two, for place two. Communication and information resources also received twenty-three dots. IEPs, seventeen dots, instructional assistance, fifteen dots, and programs, ten dots. And then we had the other areas that got less dots. Then we talked about the community forums and I distributed a draft flyer. And we had a very spirited discussion about the community input forums, what the purpose was and what the language on the flyer should be. And we looked at some more workable dates and times and we have come up with three dates. And the first will be Monday, October twenty-eighth at Lacumbra Junior High School. The second will be November second at Galita Junior High School. And the third will be Wednesday, November fourth. Originally, we talked about November fifth, but we could not find a site because it's the day before voting. So November fifth will be Wednesday at Santa Barbara Junior High School. The third meeting at Santa Barbara will be held in Spanish with English translation.
Where will that one be?
That's going to be at Santa Barbara Junior High School.
Dr. Miller?
You know, I might be reversed. It may be Galita. I need to check on those.
The first one on the twenty-eighth is actually a Wednesday.
Oh, it's October twenty-eighth is a Wednesday?
I just remembered. We moved the Monday twenty-sixth in case anyone's taking that down.
Oh, Wednesday, okay. I'm still having my flyer proofed.
Dr. Noel?
It just occurs to me, are there any east side, west side problems that could affect the attendance? Because I didn't hear anything from the west side of town, any meeting on the west side of town.
Lacumbra Junior High School.
Lacumbra, Lacumbra Junior High School.
Oh, I missed it entirely. I beg your pardon.
And then we talked about the community forums and the purpose. And these forums are not under the Brown Act. And we want to make them as friendly as possible. Also, we will have other avenues for public input to provide comments. For example, they can send emails to me, written input, as well as phone calls. And basically, we will ask the public to provide comments, not necessarily on the hundred and fifty-three recommendations. We will make a reference though, if they are interested in getting that information, we will have hard copies available, both in English and Spanish, at the district office. And of course, we've got that on our webpage. And then regarding the distribution of flyers, we distributed, we, we brainstormed on how we could distribute the flyers, of course, through community agencies, parent organizations, our tele-parent message in both English and Spanish, post on the district website and the Santa Barbara e-news, have principals be our conduits to publicize them at the school sites, make sure we include our secretaries in the front office and include in other mailings, for example, PTA, PTAS, PTSA announcements. And also send an email to all of our department chairs to distribute. We will provide copies, as well enough copies, to all the school sites so the teachers can put them in the students' backpacks. And we also are going to make an announcement at the ELAC meeting that is going to be held at Galita Junior High School on October twentieth and any other relevant meetings. And then share the information at the SESSOR, the self-review parent meeting that's going to be held, I think, October twenty-second in the evening. So we, we would like to spread the word as much as possible. We'd like to get as much feedback and, and public input. Then after we're done with that, we will bring our work group back together and synthesize the information. And, oh, I forgot to mention, all of the recommendations that were made and the, and the consolidations and transferring recommendations from one category to another, I will be integrating those documents and having a new document within, within the week. Then after our community input forum information comes back to the work group, hopefully we will be ready to develop our implementation plan. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Heron?
I'm just curious. You, you mentioned that training, organization, communication, et cetera, were priorities?
Correct.
What does that mean? From a practical standpoint? You said training is number one priority?
That's basically getting a sense of where the group was feeling. If, if we put all of our money or all of our dots into one area, what is the most important priority at this time? Where would we put a lot of energy? It wasn't a vote. It was more kind of like a, a straw consensus. It was more kind of like a straw consensus of where our energy would go.
I guess my question is, you know, programs was way down on the list. I'll just pick that one out.
Correct. Programs is number 10, 10 dots.
But what if it was one item in 10, in programs, that was absolutely necessary? How would it ever see the light of day?
Yeah.
What if the number one thing in organization, I presume is arms buzzman, but if that doesn't come until after you deal with training, how, I don't understand priority by groups rather than priority by item.
And it really wasn't a vote or something that is going to be prescriptive. It just gave us a sense of, are we on the right direction?
Okay.
And what we really need, and we were thinking of putting dots on the individual areas, but it would have taken a long time. We just kind of wanted to get a sense.
I just want to make sure that if there's a really top priority item that's in one of the lesser groups, that's, oh, well, we can't get to that.
Great. And there were some assumptions, too. For example, disability awareness category, we collapsed that entire group into other groups because there was so much duplication. We felt disability awareness was really important to all groups, so we didn't put dots in those areas. And then some of the areas, for example, advisory groups, we thought that was really important, but, you know, we, there were some single areas.
But that's in the second category, organization.
Correct.
But what if that was the number one item that everybody wants?
Yeah.
When would you get to it?
And we will continue that discussion when we get back at the third meeting. Yeah. There's a lot of unanswered questions. We have a lot of discussion.
Dr. Noel.
Yes, I question the public forums.
Okay.
And my questions are based on experience, having gone to some public forums that were organized to get input from people. And in this case, one of them was a public forum that Bill Glassby conducted, the first such forum in the development of the FICMAT study, and about six people showed up. I think there was only one Hispanic person. I remember another public forum that the only people who showed up were two high school students who were assigned and the translator, so they became the forum. And I worry about that, just the attendance issue, that's one. Then the other part is, if you get the people there and you show them in one form or another the FICMAT recommendations and ask them to react, for the life of me, I can't see how some very important groups, subgroups, are going to make any sense out of that whatsoever. I would think that for people who don't speak English, people who have limited education, people who don't know our system, people who aren't accustomed to speaking out in public meetings, people who are afraid of microphones, people who don't want their identities known, just won't open up. And I think that to get them to open up, it has to be a very informal, loosely structured meeting, and we have to be very, very patient to let people who are not quickly forthcoming have time to speak and get the people who are overly quickly forthcoming to be quiet because they're intimidating. And back to the main part of it is, the FICMAT recommendations, I mean, I have trouble relating to them.
I do, too. In response to your concerns, I went back and reworded the flyer, and then I bounced it off of a few of the folks that had concerns. And instead of benchmarking it on the FICMAT recommendations, basically, it's, we need input from folks. We're restructuring special education. And we did have a study conducted last year, and there are recommendations available. They can have access to those if they want to see those recommendations, and they have been on the webpage. But we're looking for input and recommendations on when we develop the action plan. Basically, it's, the community input is to gather input for a special education action plan for restructuring special education. So this is not under the Brown Act. It would be public comments on all aspects of special education, or special needs, actually, because we do have 504 students as well.
Mrs. Deacon.
Yes. I think we cannot but have these community forums. I mean, clearly, I think that's a mandate that we need to act upon. I agree that an informal setting would be really useful, and I think we talked about this last night, that informal dress, you know, not a huge distinction between district folks and families. If there's not a big turnout, we can put chairs in a circle. I mean, just make it really hospitable and welcoming. And I want to make sure that we're there to answer questions from people, not just to address complaints and concerns, because I'm hopeful that there will be people who come who just want to understand how to navigate the system. And we talked about having a desk off to the side or a table where people could go and speak one-on-one if they weren't comfortable speaking in a large group, so. And I also am hopeful that, given the turnout at the last FICMAT session where there were so many people, that we're now using some of those folks who helped bring.
Correct.
Get that turnout there to get the word out. And I know Jacquininda was there last night, and she's going to work with us on that, so I'm hopeful that we will get a good turnout. But, and just getting back to this dot piece and the priorities, for me, it was more just a validation of those things that bubbled to the top as really striking people as the overriding concerns, but that's not to say that items buried within some of the other categories might not be critical. One thing I think it's important for us to let people know about is how many things are already being done, because some of those things already are in place, especially the structural and organizational pieces. And lastly, I would just like to make a pitch, and I guess it was no consequence, not a coincidence, I was sitting next to Ms. Jete, but she was also very concerned, as I am, that we start attaching some dollar figures to some of these things because we know, there is urgency in spending this money, and I know we approved some training money. I don't know if we can use money for stipends. I know we had kind of a small stipend for instructional aides when we asked them to come, but maybe we can use some of this money to pay teachers to go, instructional assistants to go, and really get a move on with some of these trainings and line them up. And I know you're doing that already, but I guess we have money to spend in this category. We want to make sure we don't lose it.
And by this money, Mrs. Deacon, you're referring to the ARRA?
The RRA money, exactly.
Special Education Fund.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I have no objection from my fellow board members, I'm going to shuffle the agenda at this point a little bit since we're running late, and I would like to jump to item F4 followed by F6. Item F4 is report on classroom music instructional program.
Well, we're implementing the classroom music instruction program that was provided by the citizens of this community when they approved the parcel tax measure I, and we're anxious to have you know what that looks like.
Yes, and this is, this is just the first report that we will have this year. We hope to have some students later in the year, once they've really mastered their instruments a little bit more. But we have quite a few of our teachers here, not every single one, tonight with us, and let's see, we've got, well, you know what, Nancy, I'm going to let you come up and introduce Doug and Karen and Kimberly, Sarah. See, I do know them. And they have a slideshow that Dave spent quite a bit of time today getting the music going for. And Nancy's going to describe a little bit where we came from, what measure I has really helped provide as a supplemental program for us this year, and then what we have in the future. And I know you have some handouts here you've read. Nancy?
Good evening. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, and we have lots of exciting things to report tonight. And the first of those is that, thank you to the Santa Barbara Ed Foundation. They successfully campaigned for measure H and measure I last November, and both measures passed by an overwhelming majority. And as a result, we were able to hire five new full-time music teachers this last summer, and most of them are here. I would like to introduce the rest of the music team that is here. First of all, Karen Dutton has been a longtime, full-time member of our elementary teaching staff, and she is, a couple years ago, let's see, just a year ago, was interviewed and was offered the position of band director at Santa Barbara Junior High School. So she is transitioning into, from part-time, or from full-time in elementary music to part-time, and hopefully, full-time at Santa Barbara Junior High School very soon. So she's our longtime elementary instrumental music teacher. And with us full-time for the first time this year also is Douglas Troop. He has been with our district, both elementary and secondary district, in many capacities, part-time over the last few years, and we're very, very happy to have him with us full-time this year. He is a specialist in both band and orchestra instruments, and so he is very versatile and is helping us tremendously throughout the district and is, in fact, the other half and the better half of our Team One here. So Douglas and I teach together. We have a Team Two instrumental, grades four through six instructional team, and Sochi Tafoya is with us here. She is our string specialist. She joined us first time last year as a part-time instructor, part-time music teacher, and we're very, very happy to have her with us this year as a full-time music teacher, string specialist with the four or six instrumental program. And so she's partner and a teaching partner on Team Two, could not be with us tonight. She's taking a course, and her name is Sherry Scripter. She was with us part-time last year. She's a band specialist. We're very happy to have her again this year, full-time. And then we have something very, very new this year that we're very excited about. We have, for the first time ever, two credentialed kindergarten through third grade music specialists, and I would like to introduce Kimberly Ransom and Sarah DeSalvo. They are implementing the next big, exciting phase of our district-wide kindergarten through sixth grade comprehensive music program that has been designed to align sequentially, I would say, we're planning to implement it sequentially with the California State Standards for the Performing Arts. And our goal is to, as soon as we can have the kindergarten through sixth grade program fully implemented, is to start meeting those standards. So we're many steps closer this year than we were last year. We're in our third year of implementing the changes that are needed to get closer to fully realizing those standards and having students be able to learn them and be fully competent in them, skilled in them. So this year, what is very exciting is we have added music for the entire sixth grade level at all schools, all 10 non-charter schools in the district, and all fourth graders are studying violin, and we will soon, hopefully, be able to implement classes for all of the fifth graders. In addition, all of the third graders are studying recorder with Kimberly and Sarah. So this is a huge, huge growth this year. Over last year, we have approximately 600-plus students studying violin in the fourth grade. We will have over 600 students studying string and band instruments in the fifth grade. We have over 600 students studying band and string instruments in the sixth grade, and over 600 third graders playing recorder. So I think we have somewhere around 2,600 students studying music once a week with a A very exciting part of this program is the district sponsorship of our after-school music program, where in our third year of this program, it is, it's housed at Santa Barbara Junior High School, and students, the original requirement was that students needed to have one year of instruction on their instrument, but this year, we are taking a number of students who are in their first year of instruction on a band or orchestra instrument, and any fourth through sixth grader is welcome. We provide free bus transportation from every single elementary school site to Santa Barbara Junior High School on Tuesdays and Thursdays, Thursday afternoons, and our district staff, instrumental staff are the instructors there and coaches. We also have one other very, very important person to our program who is not able to be with us tonight, and she is our trombone coach, Madalena Facetti. She's an hourly staff member, and she is a big part of both our in-school program and our after-school program at Bravo. And these students come twice a week so that they get a total of three instructions per week, and it makes a huge difference. Their instruction after school goes from about 3:20 until 4:45, and then their parents come and pick them up by 5:00. And last year, we noticed a huge difference in just those two extra music lessons per week. The students who came to Bravo far exceeded the skill level and interest level of the students who were taking only one lesson a week through their schools. So we're very, very excited. This is, this is a dream come true for us, for our students, and we're very happy for the support, both by the district, the school board, and Santa Barbara Education Foundation.
Thank you. Stay put because we'll probably have questions. Go anywhere, Ms. Matheson. Board members. Dr. Noel.
I have questions. This is just great, and I know how elated you all must be because you've worked so hard so long and through some very meager times. I want to acknowledge Lanny Ebenstein because it was Lanny's initiative that got the board to consider the parcel tax in the first place, and we're all grateful for that. Question. Continuity all the way up through high school. Are all the pieces equally covered now? Because I see this marvelous stream of kids going to be coming out of the elementary schools, going into junior high schools, and then I hear, then I talk to the high school music programs, and they say, we really need the people from the junior highs to keep our programs alive.
Well, I guess as elementary music teachers, we kind of feel like we're driving the bus from the back, and we're hoping that we have so many students coming out of the elementary schools who are interested in continuing in the performing arts, that the classes will be able to be filled at the secondary level, first with junior high, and then in probably two or three more years at the high schools. I'm anticipating a huge change in the enrollment levels in the performing arts in secondary.
I talked to, at Reno one time, I went with the Santa Barbara's band, I talked to someone from Garfield High School in Seattle. They win all the time. Well, they have this feeder system, it's just this continuity all the way through. They had auditions for saxophone players for a high school, for the high school band. Dan Garsky would be lucky to get through four kids. At 90 applicants.
Oh, my gosh.
Just for saxophone. I don't think we can aspire quite that much, but it's all part of this continuous system. And whatever, I don't know what's going on at the secondary level now.
We should, in fact, give you a lengthy report. But we do have more music classes at the junior high level, which were provided by my measure H.
Yeah.
Again, property tax, parcel tax comes through.
Thank you very much. And thank you, all of you.
Mr. Herron.
As a saxophone clarinet player from grade school, you know, through grade school, junior high, high school, and first year of college, and then it bombed, you know, I'm a fan of music. I mean, band got me through junior high school and high school. That was my outlet, you know. But I know Mr. Smith won't like this, but it's easy to sit here and say, by the end of four years, when the first four years of the parcel tax, we're going to have a fantastic program. And then we have to ask the question, what then? And it's easy to sit here and say, oh, we'll just pass another parcel tax, and don't worry about it. I think, you know, we need to. I think, you know, we need to be forward-thinking and understand this program's gonna be successful. And somehow, in our budgetary process, and I know money's scarce, obviously, but we still have to face the issue of funding this program into the, into the future. How we do that in the budgetary process or keep, you know, keep that at the forefront. I don't want to be sitting here when we have to cancel these programs. You know, in fact, if that's the case, I probably won't be here. But, yeah, I don't want these things canceled. I want them to go on indefinitely. I want them to grow and grow and grow. But we do have to face the issue, and I don't particularly care to go back to the voters all the time for, for special taxes or, you know, special fees. We may have to, but I'm not gonna sit here today and say, "Oh, let's just predicate it on." We will. So somehow, we all have to be thinking of, how do we fund this great program into the future? And it may be parcel taxes, but it may be we have to do something else, too. We, we need to be aware of it.
Mrs. Deacon?
I have a clarinet somewhere in a closet. Actually, but my question was about choral music because that seems like that's so accessible to everyone and doesn't even require an instrument except, I guess, your voice. And I, obviously, we have musicians here with instruments, but is there a choral component or could there be one?
There could be one with greater resources. And in fact, it is part of, of a master plan that Karen Dutton and I presented to the school district at the request of, I guess, the district and the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, probably about seven years ago. It's just a matter of resources. Yeah. Right now, and just a little bit of history of where we've come from, the district has always supported and sponsored the four through six instrumental music program. And then each school site has sort of put together what they could with, with PTA money for a choral program or general music program. And so this is a huge piece by providing all sites with the K6, first kindergarten, first and second will be orchestral work, third grade recorder, fourth violin, and then fifth and sixth, full strings and, and band. And so that takes, that takes a huge piece of that and puts it in place. And I, I think it's just a matter of coming up with resources to complete the picture.
And, and they're all learning to read music, which is great, too.
Yes, yes.
Because that's the step in any, whatever direction you go.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's one of the, the top goals for our third, new third grade recorder program this year, is that they learn to read music in third grade. So when they come to fourth grade, we do some reteaching and reviewing, but there's something familiar or they're well on their way. And then by fifth and sixth grade, we should see much, much stronger skills in that department.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Good for the brain.
It's wonderful for the brain.
On that correlation with academic correlation.
Yeah. I'll chime in with, I, I've been going to the honor band performances for a number of years and seeing the elementary honor band this past year, after they've had the year of the Bravo experience, going to Santa Barbara Junior High twice, having the extra instruction. Boy, dramatic difference in the performance level for the elementary students. It was really impressive. And you could, you could absolutely hear it and see it in what they were doing. So that was terrific. And I also have to say, wow, what a difference just a couple of years makes without the Education Foundation. I mean, this, this would have completely collapsed just, what, two, three years ago? It would have been the end. And so I really thank the Education Foundation for helping us keep our toe in the water through really difficult times and then helping to pass Measure I, in this case, to, to support this because I think it's gonna be a tremendous resource for our students and make a huge difference in their academic achievement as well as their, you know, anything that they can learn in terms of culture and music. So that's wonderful. I know that this is a year of growing pains and, and there will be more growing pains next year as you expand down to kindergarten. My hope would be that, I know one of the issues that keeps coming up is scheduling. And so I hope that maybe scheduling, now that this is, there's some experience under the belt, that maybe can be done in the spring so that this, some of the schools can start more quickly. We'll see. And Ms. Sowaski, you wanted to add in?
That was exactly what I was going to talk about. But I wanted to publicly commend and thank all the music teachers because they are absolutely amazing, the most flexible people. Talk about scheduling nightmares. I mean, they have, I can't tell you how many hours they have all spent as, they're two teams with added people, but they're working together. I mean, midnight, there's emails flying. I mean, trying to get things in place so that every child, you know, like the next morning or the next week gets music and working with the principals. We do have a principal that stepped up, Donna Ronzoni, and volunteered to help supervise and help coordinate. So she has been working with her peers and with the music teachers and just doing it in her free time. So everyone has, has really worked well together. But thank you all for all your work. I, we're just there, I think, finally. And scheduling should be a lot easier next year, we hope. We've learned a lot this year.
Isn't that a visual spatial skill that you learn through music, scheduling?
I call it a very steep learning curve with the scheduling.
Helps with math, too.
I, I have to say, I, I do want to thank you for bringing Brubeck and Johnny Desmond to the board meeting.
My favorite, my favorite sax player.
That was, that was the first time.
Yes. Maybe we should have it sort of playing in the background all the time. That would be, it might sort of calm the savage breast at certain times. Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Okay. And we are moving on now to item F6, jumping ahead to the report from Santa Barbara Education Foundation regarding after-school program.
I'm gonna ask Tim Schwartz, who's the executive director of the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, to introduce us. Tim, it's good to have you back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to acknowledge the consultant who did the work on this project, who was with us this evening, too, Susan Epstein, who's sitting in the back. The, the genesis of this project came about long before I joined the foundation. Really, my understanding is about two years ago. But the fundamental commissioning of this or the context for the report was to examine the landscape of music and arts instruction in the elementary schools. And then, on the other hand, look at the interest and the capacity of the music, music and arts organizations in town to offer their programs within our elementary schools. These were both, and while the agenda points to after-school programs, this looked at both during school, offering, these offerings during school as well as after school. The funding for this assessment was provided by the Santa Barbara Foundation and the Santa Barbara Education Foundation equally. Now, given that I just mentioned it was about the elementary schools, we did have to limit the scope to a reasonable number of schools. Otherwise, this would have been a very costly assessment. So the scope was limited to the Title I elementary schools, Adams, Harding, McKinley, Franklin, Monroe, and Cleveland. The methodology that Susan deployed on this was quite thorough, over 15 different criteria, including interviews with principals, teachers, students, numerous musics and art, arts providers, research on education trends affecting arts, music instruction in the elementary schools, research on educational goals of arts and music education, and so on. With the discussion we just had about INH, this assessment took place before that implementation. So quite a bit of the, I wouldn't say quite a bit, but, but a substantial amount of the information that came out changes now with the implementation of INH. Clearly, there's more activity going on now in the schools with INH, the passage of INH than when this assessment took place. So we see a lot more activity than the principals were able to reflect on at the time they were interviewed. So that changes the dynamic a bit, I'd say, for the better, but it does change the dynamic in terms of what the assessment was about when the report was written versus the execution on INH, thanks to the teachers here. So I think really the opportunity that we're looking at with respect to the assessment and the information that was, was conveyed is how to really integrate arts into the existing curriculum. This isn't so much now, because of the passage of INH, how to add to the curriculum, but how you integrate it into the curriculum. And I'll just give you one example. The Education Foundation now has its offices in the Arts and Culture Center up at 1330 State Street. So I have the opera literally two doors down from me. My daughter was in fourth grade last year, and one of the fourth, part of fourth grade curriculum in social studies is California Gold Rush. Well, there's an opera about the Gold Rush. So it's how you might bring in the opera, not to, again, add to the curriculum because teachers don't have much room to add to their curriculum, but how you can complement what already exists. So that's one element that we might be able to look at. And the other, of course, is enhancing existing after-school programs, of which there are many, or again, adding additional after-school programs through music and arts. I will say also that I've had some interesting discussions, being in this building, the only non-performing arts, arts group in this entire building, that there is a perceived hierarchy in the arts world, music being on the top and dance being on the bottom. And then you have vocal and, and theater and drama and these sorts of things in between. So some of these folks have taken even issue with the name of this assessment, but that's not Susan's responsibility. It's just a matter of how these folks look at how music and arts are categorized and seen in the community. So we're looking at these two opportunities, integrating into the curriculum, that the existing curriculum and then after-school programs. Some of the challenges that have been identified for the schools is aligning the curriculum and what they do offer, what the, with what the arts groups are offering. And how do you find that information? There is a resource through the Children's Creative Project, but this assessment has suggested a more interactive web-based resource, which I'll talk about in a moment. Assessing the credibility, reliability, and the liability issues of bringing arts groups onto campus is an important issue. Principals are approached, teachers are approached quite often by arts and, and different organizations, but they don't necessarily know if that group will show up the next day, if they're reliable, credible organization. So that's, that's an important question the schools have. And scheduling, how do you schedule these kinds of things? There are other considerations and challenges, but these are some of the highlights. For the arts groups, it's understanding how their offerings integrate into the standards. So if they, now the opera, as an example, understood immediately when I went and talked to them, and, and they jumped on it right away. They understand because the, the director of the opera comes from LA and, and has had some experience in this. But a number of the arts groups, probably, I'd say perhaps the majority of the arts groups, don't have a clear understanding of how their work might integrate into the content standards of the schools. I mean, the content standards are quite thick and it'd be pretty intimidating as an artist to necessarily go through there and try to see how the, what they do fits. But nonetheless, that is, it's, it's an opportunity and a challenge for the arts groups. Funding, so if we are able to encourage and grow arts, and I say that broadly, arts programming on campus, do the arts groups themselves have the funding? The assessment suggests, and I think that's probably true, that most of them do not. So then how do we go about supporting them so that they can bring their programs onto campus? And then just simply accessing the schools. This is a frustration that the arts community has had with respect to the Santa Barbara schools. In fact, a number of them have said, and these are local arts groups, the bulk of their bookings are not in Santa Barbara, particularly in the Santa Barbara School District. They, and I'll quote, "Santa Barbara elementary schools are very resistant to our offerings. We used to offer most of our programs in Santa Barbara, but now we have to travel." But they also recognize that with no Child Left Behind, and this is a direct quote, "Teachers are overworked and can't add more. It's hard to get educators to return calls." So there's a, there's an empathy there, but the fact is they've had difficulty reaching into the schools. So the recommendations that came out of the assessment were really fourfold. After-school, and focused principally on after-school programming. After-school programming that would serve existing after-school programs through AOK and perhaps RAP. The AOK programs, as you know, are principally managed through the Parks Recreation. Those sites, the six sites that, where those programs exist currently serve 1,000 students. And I think we need to look at the numbers in terms of what it would cost to serve those 1,000 students. There are advantages, we need to also develop a matrix, I think, but there are advantages to the AOK sites because those students are required to attend. So for those arts groups that like, whose programs are built on, let's call it a series where, where one lesson builds upon previous lessons, required attendance is important. RAP is a different kind of program where the students are not required to attend, but there are a number of arts groups that are geared toward one-off, if you will, kinds of, of sessions where attending one week doesn't make any difference in terms of what you gain by attending the following week. So that's one of the recommendations, is to, is to look at what is already in place in terms of after-school programs, leveraging that, leveraging that infrastructure and trying to find a way to bring the arts and musics groups into those programs. In addition to that, we could look at the students that are on these six campuses again, who are not part of AOK or RAP. AOK particularly having a waiting list. So that would be an additional 1,500 students and looking at even the potential of hiring a coordinator to just serve now what would be a total of 2,500 students. I think that's a sizable number. That's about 95% of all six of those students, schools' population. So I think that's pretty ambitious. But there's the idea of you start with what you have in place and then expand it to these Title Ones. I'd like to see some, us do a little bit more research beyond just the Title Ones and see what the interest is in the other, the other elementary schools. But again, we had to limit the focus and scope of this report. Third recommendation had to do and was focused on the promotion and exchange of information of the arts groups and how the schools access that information. The principal tool and vehicle for that right now is the Children's Creative Projects Art Catalog, which is this. It's a hardbound book. Susan found some very interesting and highly informative, interactive kind of websites, web-based tools, online tools, where the data was cut and you can look at the information by artists in any number of different ways. That's a tool, I'm calling it the tool, web-based tool, that seems to be gaining, in terms of some of the, the conversations that we've been having with folks, it seems to be a tool that a lot of folks would like to see. The, and then there are samples of this. It's not, we wouldn't necessarily be recreating the wheel. Orange County, San Francisco, a lot of different districts and organizations around the state have these tools in place. The question for me still is, if we build it, will they come? That's not, to me, altogether clear. I do think the answer is probably yes, but I don't want to go forward and pull the trigger on a project until I know the answer is yes. The principal users of this catalog are PTAs. Will teachers be inclined to use this online tool if we put it up and build it? And I, again, my, if I had to bet, my answer would be yes, that they would. But I want to do a little bit more research to, to confirm that. Then the fourth recommendation really had more to do with training and professional development, which reflects back on the comments I made earlier with, having to do with content standards and linking up those standards with the arts organizations and helping, training and professionally developing those arts organizations to better understand how what they do fits the curriculum and standards within the classrooms. Because as I said, the majority of those folks do not. And there has been, Susan did a good job in assessing how many of those groups, at least of those that she was interviewed, were interested and would be willing to participate. And there was a, a good show of hands, if you will, in terms of, in terms of following through with that. Some of the considerations, again, tools and from the tools, the web-based tools, is if, if we build it, will they come? Will teachers use the site? What functionality is critical? How is scheduling and booking managed? Some sites, some of these sites that we looked at, they manage that on, within the site. What organizations in this, in this community have the capacity to, to keep that kind of material and that kind of site up to date and, and well, well-managed? And is there any sort of fee for service for doing that? There's a two-way bridge, so it's fine to put up a site. If the teachers start calling the artists, do they have the funding to, to respond? And that's a critical, having a one-way bridge doesn't do us much good. We have to have a two-way bridge for this to work. So we need to really look at the arts groups and the funding availability. I've talked to a number of foundations who are a little bit frustrated with the fact that they get 40, 50 proposals from arts groups asking for funding. So they're looking to us to try to sort of perhaps use this assessment and what we might learn from it, particularly toward execution as a way of, of, of streamlining that process with, with respect to the arts communities going to them for funding. And then does professional development differ for groups that are integrating into curriculum versus single performances that might have, groups that would provide single performances during assemblies, during school time, or for after-school? Professional development, content standards during school versus professional development after school? I think that professional development is important, but I think you're gonna be looking at different trainings and different, different kinds of information that would be exchanged. I think we need to look and talk with the resident artists. This assessment focused principally on performing artists, and there are a large, large community of resident artists that I think need to be consulted further before any execution is, is taken on this report. There are also a few other stakeholders that I think we need to confer with, I think, further with the Children's Creative Project, the district curriculum officers. I've started to schedule some meetings with those folks. It hasn't happened yet. The county's Arch Commission and other folks that I think are important stakeholders in the, in what we might do with this report. So where I'm sitting right now with my board and with this group discussions with Brian, we're weighing what the Santa Barbara Education Foundation's priorities are now that we sort of have a clean slate with music off the ground and running. And we are, by the And we are, by the way, we do have the I and H on our radar and it's not too soon to start campaigning if that's the way we, if that's the way we need to go. But we're looking at our own priorities against what the district's priorities are and, not against, but actually in concert with the district priorities in terms of what we do with this proposal against other needs. But I think either way, to really accurately reflect what we do with this, we need to consult with additional stakeholders. And I'd like to convene a sample of teachers, principals, artists to look at the report, to critique the report, to identify any critical questions that still need to be addressed. These are the groups that would be actively engaged with one another. They should take a look at this report as a draft, which is where it stands today, and see if they can poke holes in it and find out where the weak spots are, find out where the strengths are, learn from that. And then we might have some more concrete action items. Really have them help shape what the execution might be in terms of the next step. So, that's the quick summary of this activity. I think Susan did a fabulous job. I think with any good assessment, there are a lot of good and more additional questions that come from it, and I think we really need to look at some of these additional questions before moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Any comments, board members? Mrs. Deacon.
As someone who's been attending the Education Foundation meetings, I had a chance to get a sneak preview at this report, and I have to say I thoroughly enjoyed reading it. It was really illustrative and it gave so many good ideas and the quotes from the teachers and the principals and the students themselves really opened my eyes to a lot of the potential for so many more opportunities. And I see this as a bridge opportunity for the Education Foundation, which has been so firmly grounded in music, to expand and grow and still keep that tradition, but offer new opportunities to the students. I'm hoping all the board will get a chance to see and read the report. I was really interested in the interactive web-based piece that we'd been talking about at some of our meetings, and I know in Orange County, they have a system where this is done, where teachers can actually just go online, find an organization that might adapt the curriculum they're teaching at a particular time. And I'm not sure if the standards are actually provided as well by that organization, but that's a piece, I think, isn't it?
It does show the matrix. You can break it down, you can look at dance, you can look at vocal, you can look at just about any sort of art type, let's say, and then you can look at all of the groups following under that type and then what standards they meet. So, whether it's social studies or math or, yes, so it does have a nice matrix in the Orange County case.
And it would, you'd need training for some of the artists perhaps to integrate those standards.
Absolutely.
And training for the teachers to use a tool like this. And I'm not sure if this is where the Education Foundation's going to go with this or not, but it has a lot of promise, I think.
Well, probably, and the principals, I think the principals and the teachers are very aware of the benefits of bringing these things into the classrooms. The conflict is time, how to do it, how to do it creatively. They'd love to do it, they recognize the value. It's simply a matter of time and bandwidth within the school day. That's why we, in my consultations with Brian, I think are initially focusing, will probably go toward how we might execute this first, or at least focused principally on after-school to begin with.
Mr. Herron.
Have you by chance met Michelle Magnuson from the County Education Office, Partners in Education?
No, I know Ben Romo, but I've not met Michelle.
Michelle is in charge of a program that does what you're talking about to some degree. All the teacher has to do is say, "I need a fourth grade science speaker on this topic."
That's what the Children's Creative Project probably.
No, no, this is Partners in Education.
Oh, the speakers bureau, yes.
Michelle knows specifically what the grade level requirements are.
Okay.
Standards.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And all the teacher has to do, "I want them at 10 o'clock on Thursday." And Michelle finds the person or the entity of the organization and says to the teacher, "They'll be there." And it's all pre, everything is done for the teacher. So, the teacher, all the teacher has to do is go online and say, "Here's what I want." Period.
And that's where I think this could be really helpful in terms of integrating into existing curriculum. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so you may want to meet with Michelle because she's spent, she's got a huge database of teachers, of teachers' needs, of speakers, of organizations that will do just about anything a teacher wants. So, you may want to chat with her.
Sure. Thank you.
Dr. Noel.
It just occurred to me, the, on the question of integrating the curriculum, are you at all working with VADA?
Not yet. We have not.
Presumably, they have got arts content already woven into the language arts and other parts of the curriculum.
They do, they're sitting at the high school, correct? Santa Barbara High School. We're looking principally at the elementary level, but we might be able to learn some lessons from the teachers at VADA and perhaps even the students.
I would like to request, because not all board members have seen the report, so if we could get that report in the board brief.
Sure.
That would be great. And I'm really interested in the after-school aspect to this. What I see, what's frustrated me for many years is this report looks at the Title One schools, but if you then looked at the non-Title One schools, and I shouldn't call them non-Title One schools necessarily, but higher socioeconomic schools, they, there's an enormous disparity between what's offered after-school in terms of actual enrichment activities and who gets to take them and who doesn't have access to it. But at the same time, for our high socioeconomic schools, there's, it's a lot of work for these parent groups to put on what they're putting on. And there's issues of cost and liability, and I think that there's frustration at all of our schools. Everybody wants to do this for the kids, but if you don't coordinate, then it's uneven access and it's very difficult for the schools that are doing it. So, I would, I think that there'd be a lot of parent interest in it, and I, there were a lot of great points that were raised.
Well, your idea of these schools that are already doing it, they may have the model or the mechanisms in place that we need to replicate. Again, if we don't have to recreate the wheel, let's not, but the funding issues are going to be the differentiator.
Absolutely. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, board members, we're running behind time, so I think I'm going to go ahead and pull item F7, the continuation of first reading of Board Policies 4,000 series. I know that'll disappoint you. And at this time, we're going to.
It'll be back.
It'll be back. We'll go to F2, update on, not F2, sorry, I'm trying to go back to before Mr. Juado. F3, report on Federal American Recovery and Reinvestment Act ARRA funds.
This money has been important to our budget, however, it's only one-time money, but Meg will give you a report on where we stand.
Good evening. Yes, we got five different buckets of money on the ARRA money. The first one was the stabilization, the state fiscal stabilization funds, which came to us pretty much, it was our largest amount of funds and the least restricted. It's basically to retain teachers, and that's exactly what we spent it on. Once the payroll hit this, in September, we moved all the funds from all the expense out of the 1,000s and put them into the 3,200s. So, we fully expended the state fiscal stabilization funds by the end of September. The next one was the child nutrition equipment assistance grant, and this is also one-time funding. Child nutrition got $55,000, and they put it towards their mobile café. And that has been fully expended also as of September. Title One, supporting low-income schools, one time, once again. Most of that money was, or half of that money was spent on Read 180, and the rest basically has been allocated through sites into the district. As you can see, that's budgeted to be fully expended. The allocation to the sites was just, this was just done at the end of September, and so now the sites have the money to get ready to spend. But as far as ours concerned, the district level, we have given it out to the sites at this time. The special education IDEA money is used to enhance special education, and as you can see, we still have quite a bit of funds in this area. And as Mrs. Deacon's mentioned, then I am eager to put some programs towards this, whether it's the training or whatever we come up with with the stakeholders' group. So, I'm sure that we can get some of that money used up. If we don't spend some of this money collectively through the SELPA, the members of the SELPA community, we could possibly lose the second funding source, which will be coming, they say, by December. So, we filled out our expense report and hopefully as collectively as a SELPA, we will hit that targeted amount, but I'm not even sure the state has a targeted amount yet. So. The preschool special education entitlements and grant is kind of a strange situation because we got 50% of it back in June, at the very end of June, and right away, we had to give that back. But nobody knew at first that we had to give it back to the county. So, we had to pay a little bit of interest on that, but we did send it back to the SELPA, and then they turn, they're going to turn around, which they have, and given us the other 50%, which we can use any way we want, as long as it's in special ed. So, that's, that was just like an extra pot of money that we weren't anticipating. So, as you can see on the second page, I've broken out how we've spent that, all the money, and where we have money left. Where I, in the preschool entitlement and special education entitlement and special education grant, I put it towards the contribution, but that's not necessarily where we have to put it. We can put it towards anything we want to do with it. So, that's pretty much of a budget until the stakeholders and everyone else decide on how to spend the money in special education. Any questions?
Dr. Noel.
I would, I would feel a lot better if we had been presented with this as a prospective budget rather than a description of how the money is spent, of course with the exception of the untransference. And then I guess I've been among those who, ever since the word was out that we're going to get federal money, ones who don't want the chance to say something about how it's spent. And I just wish we could find a way to, a budget process that lets us react to proposals for spending before staff makes these kinds of allegations without consulting with us. That's an observation. I don't, would you claim more of this 880,000 elementary and 1,800,000 in secondary special ed IDEA?
That's how much is remaining. That's the balance.
And what are the constraints on that?
Well, we have to have, we can't, we can't supplant, we have to supplement, and we have to enhance our program, and it has to be towards special education.
Have you said something about our time?
Well, there's, well, we have until the end of September.
As soon as possible. I mean, the issue is you have time, but there's going to be a reporting mechanism that's going to be reported back through the SELPA that CDE is going to evaluate. And you have to remember that since these are RR dollars, one of the first tenets is to spend them and get them on the street as soon as possible. Obviously, we've done a fairly good job with respect to the other categories, but we've had, you know, leadership in those areas where we had nobody in special ed. So, I think we are hindered in that regard. A couple other issues I just might as well address with regard to the state fiscal stabilization funds, as early as second interim report of last year, we've always identified that we were going to move certificated salaries into that to basically retain teachers and basically offset the structural deficit, and that's exactly what we did. We had to report by the first, by September 23rd, how we'd spend those dollars through September 30th. We have done that. As you can see with respect to the state fiscal stabilization funds, we've spent 94%. With regard to Title One, I believe a large amount of that was consumed by the Read 180 initiative, which I do believe that the board approved as well. The special ed IDEA, there's a significant amount of money still left there that the board has discretion over as long as it deals with the supplanting restrictions, as Meg pointed out. And then there's a tiny bit in preschool special ed entitlement, which is basically more flexible, and the board still has discretion over those dollars as well.
Dr. Noel.
I have more questions. Which of these categories, or all of them, are subject to the supplement or supplant?
The first category isn't. Is not. Yeah, because you have to remember, state fiscal stabilization funds, we actually got in two different apportements. Out of the roughly $5 million there, we got $4 million really by June 30th of last year, and the intent of that was to offset the revenue limit reductions or deficit. The second $1 million, which we got a little bit later, was to offset the categorical deficits. So, basically, the purpose of those dollars were basically to grant us relief from the deficits that the state applied to both the revenue limit and categoricals with the underlying, you know, tenet that basically we're going to try and stimulate the economy, retain jobs, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's a little bit different than the other categories.
Well, that didn't make sense to me.
It's really interesting when you read the advisories, and they're thick, you can do a large number of things with that first category, with that first category, with the exception of things like build athletic stadiums, renovate swimming pools. The things that are prohibited are really interesting, and there's not very many, but there's a few, and those are the kind of things. Yeah, very specific.
Title One, Part Eight, supplement only, not supplant.
Yes.
How do we have a firm, what kind of accountability system do we have in place? For example, that the money that's allocated to sites will be used only to supplement, not supplant.
Can I take a?
You want to address that?
Well, for one reason, when these, when the sites go in and make a requisition, for example, they'll go through our requisition process, and if it's using Title One funds, it has to go through our compliance officer, Dr. White. So, she will look at that and see if whatever they're purchasing is enhancing a program because she knows everything that's going on with Title One funding at each of the sites.
Supplemental, not supplant, is a little different than enhanced or not enhanced. It's you are supplanting if, if you are spending money for something that you would not, that you would otherwise have spent money for, you're supplanting. You're spending money for something you would not otherwise have spent money for, you're supplementing. And I'm not, and that can be subtle, obviously. And I'm concerned mostly because I recall sometime in the past that we got nicked on an audit and had to pay some money back, but that was used, from Title One money, that was used as a plant rather than to the supplement. I'd hate to see us do that some down, how that happened with just the pressure of this lot, a lot of these large amounts of money. So, I'm concerned about accountability on that issue. And then particularly in that Title One, where most of the sites, where the farther away it goes, the larger the control is.
But everything pretty much runs through the district office. They cannot hire anyone until it goes through all the appropriate.
But can someone here make that judgment?
Absolutely.
Something that would, okay.
Well, I should answer that as well. And Dr. White knows those rules. She's asked a rule on it, and she does.
I don't sign anything off unless Dr. White has signed it with any of the federal funds.
And just so you know, in terms of our online requisitioning process, our approval paths are set up very specifically, so if there's a categorical compliance component, she has to sign off on it before it's moved on to the authorizing agent to issue a purchase order. So, she sees everything.
Dr. Sarbus, I see your reassurance about Dr. White is very helpful, but that still doesn't answer the question of how this is accountable in anything beyond, outside of that office. And we as a board are really responsible to make sure these funds are spent properly. I think it'd be very helpful, there was some kind of a loop.
We have another level, we have another level as well in our categorical accountants. So, that's another catch level, safety net.
Last one, I just wanted to know, am I hearing you correctly that we've got 2,600,000, almost 2,700,000? 2, 2,600,000, almost 2,000, 2,700,000 dollars in federal funds for special education that has to be spent right away as long as we are using it to supplement, not supplanting. That's, that's, that's the first, that's part A of my question.
Should be spent right away.
It should be spent. I, I'm encouraging that we spend it so that we are entitled to the next round.
And the other, the other issue too, as Meg will explain, is you saw there's interest charges on that money. The longer we hang on to that, the feds charge us interest and that's why that line item occurs in each one of those categories.
And that's on any federal funding.
Yep. The second part of the question is, these new FTEs that were added, the job descriptions approved in April, or some of that was new. Are any of those new jobs, the first year of those jobs?
Which-
The special ed.
The directors and the-
Or directors and programs specialists.
Yeah. Are, are any of those, could we, is that, that doesn't sound like it's supplanting or a position.
No, I think it was always contemplated that we would charge, at least the beginning of that, you know, we would charge those against the special ed, Ara funds, at least at the beginning.
And Dr. Miller is fully charged in that area.
And, and the position, Mr. Bratton?
That would also be in 3313, which is the special education.
Could we get a, a plan for how that money's going to be spent?
Well, I think that's what, I think that's what we're, the stakeholders are going to do soon.
I don't think the stakeholders are told that they've got a couple million bucks to spend.
Well, I was there to tell them, but nobody asked me. I was ready with my calculator last night. I was ready to go.
That was what different, that was not the charge to the stakeholders.
Well-
In any way, but in a shape or form.
But by prioritizing what they did last night, training, now I can say, okay, how much is it going to cost to train and I can put a budget number towards that and we can start allocating that money out.
Let me say though, that's going to come back to the board before we spend money. It's going to be with your approval and we're going to bring back the priorities to the board and make recommendations as to what we spend money on and ask for your approval on it.
I agree. I'm pretty, same here, Dr. Clark. Could I just, it's just so, it's just so illogical to spend the money and then come back with the, with the approval when in fact, we should be looking at the plan for spending the money.
Right.
So we can react to it and give, and, and at least-
Just as the other items on this-
All right. Let's go ahead and give, already here. Any other comments? Mrs. Deacon?
I'll make this quick. I'm sure everyone feels this way, but there's nothing worse than feeling like you're being told you have to spend all this money right away without being able to do the research and the thinking behind spending it in a smart way. But I, I think we need to ask our special education staff to, to make this a huge priority and, and the stakeholders group's not going to meet again for a while, so I think maybe we need to let them know that if they have any creative ideas about equipment we need to buy, you know, adaptive technology, we're listening because-
Meet with parents?
We, we know we have resources to get that information and so I think we probably need to do that right away.
Thank you. Mr. Heron.
What, what directions we're giving to the sites as to how to spend the money or in what timeframe?
I think that would be Ms. Swoski's question.
What directions we're giving to the staffs as to how much they got and what they can spend it on and what parameters and by when?
For Title I?
Yeah, they allocate to the sites 439,000.
That has, that has just happened and so we, we will be talking with them. I mean, they, it's, I, I guess it's in their, is it in their budgets now?
It is in their budgets and they were allocated by, I believe it was CBETS, that that's how it was allocated. And as of the end of September, that's in their budget, so they know they have it.
But it, were there instructions as to what it can be spent for, how it can be spent?
This is for Title I purposes and they have long experience in knowing what's appropriate.
Oh, yes, exactly. The same, the same rules apply.
They know they better be buying instruction.
And all of their, their purchases, of course, like Meg said, have to go through the district office. Principals aren't able to just spend it on their own. It has to go through that whole checking process.
Today, we approved to come some purchase orders for Envision math books, but it was charged to special ed. Can you explain?
Because some of our special ed classrooms didn't have the core curriculum in there, although we asked and it kind of goes back to what Michael Gonzalez was talking about as far as making sure we have all the books in all the classrooms. When we do the ordering in the spring, we make, we give the instructions that, you know, every child, as far as they know what their, their enrollment's going to be and every special ed classroom has the core curriculum. And we found that in some cases, the special ed classrooms did not have that. And in many cases, they have, teachers have to have different levels. You know, they have to have the teacher's additions for several grade levels and all. So those kinds of things are very appropriate because they're special ed students.
Okay. Dr. Noel, I-
I have a line for one more question.
Okay. I just wanted to say, most of these things we did see and we've, we voted on these and we saw that they were coming from ARRA funds. It's just interesting to see it together as a package because usually we see it in isolated bits. So it's nice to have this as an, an update and I appreciate that. And like everybody else, I'm very eager to see what the special education plan is for, for spending money. It's, it's a nice position to be in. I'd rather be in this position than other positions in terms of not having the money. So I'm sorry that we may not have as much time as we'd like to flush things out, but I certainly hope we move forward with it. So a quick finale, Dr. Noel?
I was really over to half made my point. I thought we already bought Read 180. Probably debated a decision to adopt that and that, that's a very, that's a lot of money.
We did and that's, I'm showing where the money was spent and that was in Read 180.
And, and so that decision was to spend this Title I ARR?
Yes, because we, we received some, we received this money in June. And so we used that Title I Ara money to buy Read 180.
That answered my question.
Okay, good.
It's a big story tonight, 2,600,000 special ed, we're in a hurry.
Wish there were parents here who could hear that.
I think he's being facetious. It is 10:30 and we have one item left on the agenda that I have not pulled at this point and that's F five, report on sustainability initiatives. Board members, poor Mr. Hetyank has already sat through this one time without being able to make this presentation. Oh, do we have a speaker on F three?
F three, I'm sorry.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, before we have Mr. Wheeler go up though, I just would like a quick decision. Are we going to go on to F five or, because we still need to go back to item D 13 because-
Well, my opinion is it's too important to do late and rushed, so I'm, I'm sorry for Mr. Hetyank, but I know he'll be here at our next meeting or, or meeting after that. I'd rather spend more time on it.
Are the board members in agreement with that?
I'll make a motion, we go until 11 o'clock.
Ooh, and there's no seconds. Dang.
Six, 130 airplane to catch.
Okay. All right.
So I agree with the substance of her comment.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we will pull F five and come back to that, report on sustainability initiatives at another agenda. And at this point, for F three, we have public comment from Mr. Lane Wheeler.
I'll be brief. In Title I funds, I'm thinking, school site improvement plan and I would like to make sure that the school site councils are aware of what they're getting and what the requirements are for them to blend that into their plan to improve student performance. Oftentimes, that information gets disseminated through the principal and sometimes that information, as a result of that dissemination, gets modified somehow. So I'd like to make sure that the school site council chairs are at least aware of what they have to spend and, and, you know, and the timeframes and that sort of thing so that they can hopefully make good decisions based on what will help improve student performance and, and whatever criteria they need to meet on that one. So if that can happen, it'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We are now back at item G, returning to consent items designated for discussion. We had one left. It was D 13, which is approval of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Cooperative Transition Partnership Program contract for the 2009-10 school year. So that's it. Dr. Noel?
Well, I, the first thing that struck my mind was the curious juxtaposition of the word transparency, which is a criterion for the program, and down here under the funding source, resource number 3410. And I spent a lot of time in the California School of Accounting Manual, but I cannot remember what resource 3410 is. And my guess is Cuban was probably 10.
Federal Ara. It's a, it's a federal Ara, ARR, A resource.
Well, my, my point should be that, that plain language would serve me.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Much more than plain, less picky. It doesn't say how much from resource 3410. How much is the value of the contract?
That's, that's because I, the contract's not there. I thought that was going to be attached to it. So we can, yeah, there's nothing there. So I apologize for that. I don't know exactly how that wasn't included.
Well, can we pull this until we have that contract?
Tom?
Can we pull item D 13 until our next meeting? The approval of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Cooperative Transition Partnership Program contract for 0910? Because we have not seen the contract for it and it's not with the attachment.
How can we approve a contract we haven't read?
I'm sorry, Ms. Swoski?
Yes, the, the, on the transition partnership program, the enhancement, the extra, the Ara dollars that are, that are enhancing this program, supplementing the program, there's a, there's a contract that went with this and it's not in the attachments here and so the dollar amount is not clear. So the question is, is the timing okay to bring this back at the next board meeting? And I, I don't know what, how the transition program is working exactly with this.
We are-
Or is it time sensitive?
No, we, we can bring it back and I do, I do have the backup contract here and I don't know for whatever reason, didn't, didn't make it into the packet. But this is a 20-plus year partnership that we've had and it's to enhance the relationship we have with the transition and, and the business community to prepare students in that program for post-secondary life.
All right. That will come back to us at our next board meeting. Thank you.
And I might add that I concluded after reading this that this is clearly to supplement, not to supplant.
Um-
I move to, to pull it or I guess you don't move it?
We don't move, we'll just, we'll go ahead and pull it. We're on to item H, coming events. We did get a list of that at the beginning. Item I, board comments and correspondence. Anything the board members want to share?
I just want to make sure and I'm sorry we didn't actually do this when Tim Schwartz was here, that everyone knows that on December the 8th, Tuesday, December the 8th, there's going to be a benefit concert. Michael McDonald is performing, but it's a benefit for the Santa Barbara Education Foundation and you can buy VIP tickets for $125 and meet him and schmooze, but, but you can also buy less expensive tickets and there's some opportunities for sponsors as well. So I know I'm going, my husband's going to go too, so I hope the other board members will consider going as well and supporting the education foundation.
Absolutely. Mr. Heron?
Yes, we went, several of us went to several fascinating visits at schools this past couple weeks. But the one, one trivia is that the governor did sign the military uniform for graduation. So he did sign that, so now that's no longer-
You're an head of it.
Yeah, and there was some minor wording changes, but nothing that changes our policy very much. I did go to Harding School today for the UCSB Lab School Initial Presentation and Study Group, which I found fascinating.
Next up is item J, future agenda items. Any future agenda items from board members? One thing that I would like to talk about because we, we have a, as you can tell, a very large agenda item coming up shortly and that is the Cesar Chavez Charter renewal. At this point, it's looking likely that that will come to our November 10th meeting, but because that will take so much time on the November 10th meeting, I'm wondering if it would be possible to schedule a special meeting to try to clear other board business because that's going to take a large chunk of time. And I'm wondering if board members would be amenable to meeting on Tuesday before, November 3rd, if I can get a quorum to take care of as many things as possible at that meeting. Is that okay with you, Dr. Noel?
I will be out of town.
You'll be out of town? Okay. Will you be here, Mrs. Deacon? Okay, so we know that we'll at least have a quorum as long as three of us are able to vote affirmatively on as many things as possible. Hopefully, Mrs. Cordero can come. So that moves us on to item K. So with no objection from the board, at this time, we will adjourn.